All right, Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
I hereby declare that the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting of June 20th, 2023 is hereby called to order at seven thirty-eight from, I'm sorry, seven, not thirty-eight.
I have seven thirty-four.
Seven thirty-four. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting, hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier-News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. An announcement is made that is a matter of procedure. It is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any other electronic devices as do not interrupt the proceeding. Pledge of allegiance. Tom, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Aronio?
Here.
Ms. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Giannakas is excused this evening. Mr. Hain is currently absent. Mr. Rosenberg is excused this evening. Mr. Flatley?
Here.
Mr. Opalka?
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Gurek?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we have some meeting minutes to consider. We have the meeting minutes of May 30th and June 6th. We'll do the May 30th ones first, and so does anybody have, oh, sorry, May 2nd, what am I saying? May 2nd and May 16th, right?
May 30th and June 6th.
I have May 30th.
Oh, May 30th? Okay, I'm looking at the wrong thing here. Oh, yeah, I was looking at the May 30th. Okay, it's May 30th and the May 2nd.
I have June 6th.
And May 16th, I'm sorry.
I have May 30th and June 6th.
June 6th, June 6th. I'm sorry, I'm holding this and reading this, I'm sorry. All right, does anybody have any changes or comments to the May 30th one?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as they are typed on the May 30th, 2023 minutes?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, how about the June 6th one? Any corrections, changes? No? Okay, do I hear a motion to accept these minutes as?
I'll move June 6th.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have the resolutions. All right, we have Azabel of Northeast LLC, 1031 Valley Road, Sterling, New Jersey, Block 10601, lots five and six, application number 22-13Z. The hearing dates were April 18th and May 30th. The board action was May 30th, and memorialization is today, June 20th, 2023. Any changes or corrections to the resolution?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Yep. Hold on, you're quicker than I'm fast. Mr. Gross, wait, hold on, hold, let me get to that.
Rosenberg, Hain.
Yeah, I got the, yeah, let me open up the, okay, Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Hain? Oh, sorry, Mr. Ruth, everybody's absent, and Chairman Gurek?
Yes, okay.
Wow.
So be it for that, that'll be, it's a short one. All right, now we have the next one. Alexander and Allison Baileyam, application number 23-01Z, 541 Mountain Avenue, New Jersey, Block 10801, Lot 1.02. Hearing dates were June 6th, board action June 6th, memorialization June 20th. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, the resolution?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Chairman Gurek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, now we have the next one. Samantha Good, 90 Dogwood Terrace, Millithorne, New Jersey, Block 12805, Lot 11, application number 23-03Z. Hearing date June 6th, board action June 6th, memorialization June 20th. Any changes, corrections? Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the resolution as?
So moved.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Opalka?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All righty, very good. All right, now we have the main attraction. Use variances, major site plan application carried from May 2nd, 2023, and May 16th, 2023, Block 11301 and 11401, lots four and 23, zones B-D and C. Valley Road, application number 22-06Z, CSH Long Hill LLC, care of Cali Law LLC. Applicant proposes to develop an 87-unit, 100-bed assisted living residence. Is the applicant here?
We are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you can sit down if you want at the table.
Certainly, thank you.
Just move the mic over.
Well, there's a mic on the table that's?
Yeah, I mean, just move the mic on the table closer to you, because it seems to be facing the other direction. And that mic's good, right? That works?
Last I checked?
Okay.
Mr. Cali can just?
There was one meeting where it wasn't working too well.
You're right.
I can screen with the?
No, no, well, us hearing, us hearing is not the problem, it's putting it on the record.
Oh, it's not working?
Push the button again.
No light.
No, it's not working, that's, it's not even plugged in, I don't think.
I don't need to, so you'll have to share that.
Wait a minute, see if it's plugged in, maybe it's not plugged in. Oh, it is plugged in.
It looks like it is, yeah.
Well, that's strange.
New system coming in July.
Yeah, oh, good.
Your lips to God's ears.
Maybe the whole box is. You got it?
The wire wasn't in all the way.
Oh, okay.
Figure.
No, okay.
Something's dim light up there.
Do you want to maybe move the one that's at that table there and see if you can switch them out? Maybe that one works.
They can take the mic off.
Yeah, but no, then we need them for the witnesses, we can't do that. That one that's on the?
Should we take this one with the chairman?
No, the problem is, your witnesses need to use that one.
No, I'm not, no, that's, yeah.
I don't want the podium as a chair.
Okay.
If I win this stuff?
That's fine, okay, if you feel fine doing that.
Been sitting all day.
Wait a minute.
Or you can sit up there if you want. You can sit in that chair if you wish.
No, that doesn't scratch.
Sure.
Okay, that's fine, all right. Sorry about that. We had an issue with that on one application when I was listening to it, you couldn't hear that person.
Is that right?
No.
No problem at all, Mr. Chairman, are you all set for us?
We can edit this out of video.
Yes, I wish. Okay. Good evening, folks. For the record, Larry Cali, on behalf of the applicant, CSH Long Hill LLC. First, I want to thank the board for having us again this evening. We were here a little over a month ago, if you recall. Our commercial competitor forced a recusal, the board planner. I know we've got a board planner replacement, so I thank the board for procuring that in a very timely manner, getting us back in front of this board in short order. The applicant is hoping to move forward, so we do very much appreciate that. We'll try to keep it lean and move it forward as efficiently as we can tonight, Mr. Chairman. I'll tell you in a minute what our goal is probably going to be this evening as far as witness testimony and sort of the linear path we hope to take. Just by way of brief background, the applicant is the contract purchaser of the property. You identified it on the record before we started this evening. It's two lots, about 11 and a half acres, split zone property in the BD zone and the C zone. The proposal is for a three-story assisted living facility, and the developer, the applicant, will testify shortly, he'll be our first witness, Mr. McAlwee. Mr. McAlwee and Capital Seniors, they are not fly-by-night, this is not their first rodeo, they've been developing these assisted living facilities on the East Coast for a number of years, they do so very well, they do it with pride. You'll hear from Mr. McAlwee shortly as to how they're going to program this year, how they cited this use here, and what they hope to do here if this were approved. Thereafter, Mr. Chairman, we'll start going into our expert witnesses. You'll hear from our project engineer, Dan Chanel at Dynamic Engineering. Dan is a scrivener of record of the site plans that you have before you. Dan's going to walk the board through the site plans. Got a few little nuances here, it's a couple of lots, there's access easements, there's some wooded areas. So Dan's going to take you through exactly what the entire programming is for the development of this property, and then we're going to talk about some of the landscaping details as well, because it's pretty well emetized on landscaping improvements. Thereafter, we submitted a traffic study. David Shropshire is here to testify to that. We expect that to be relatively limited, we're going to summarize what was in that report, as well as the conclusions of that report. We're then going to be able to move on to architecture. We want to show you the nice skin of the building, the elevations. We'll take you on a tour through the floor plan, of course, you'll see exactly how this works and operates. It'll be a nice touchstone off of Mr. McAlwee's direct testimony as well, I think, when you see exactly how this works with the structure uses. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman and members, we've got some relief here, we've got a few different D variances at play here, we've got a use, we've got FAR, we've got a height issue, so John McDonough, our project planner, will testify last on the planning proofs for the use variances, as well as the bulk variances that have been generated by this project. Overall, relatively low intense use, very large property, we think it can accommodate it very, very well. So we're going to try to keep this very nice project moving forward this evening, Mr. Chairman, as best we can before the board, while we answer all your questions, your consultants as well.
Okay.
Steve, could you swear in or?
Sure, happy to do so. Mr. Roberts, I believe the witnesses were sworn in previously?
They were not, Steve.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for holding you up, Mr. Roberts, but maybe we could swear everyone in, including all our board professionals?
Anyone that's going to testify, step up and be sworn in.
All, please raise your right hand. Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And while they're making their ways back to their seats, Mr. Chairman, if I may, my recollection and notes indicate that the notice was previously deemed sufficient, both timely and in content, for the original hearing date of May 2nd, and that the matter's been carried without further notice to this evening. My notes also indicate, and I do recognize Mr. Neese is here on behalf of the objector, that if there was a confirmation that the content and timeliness of the service and publication of the notice was sufficient, and that there was not any challenge, I just want to make sure that's still accurate. So I don't know if it requires Mr. Neese's appearance, but with the chair's permission, maybe we can have his appearance for the record and just confirm that fact.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. I am Arthur Neese, NEISS, of the firm BD Patavano, and we do represent March Development. When I was here last, I had no objection to the notice, and I will repeat that again tonight. I do have one bit of housekeeping, however, it's my understanding that the new planner may have reviewed the old planner's report, and I just want to put that on the record that if that had happened, it could be a conflict in and of itself.
And the basis for your understanding of that is?
I just was told that by my partner who, and I'm not sure where he got that from.
Okay, so that's hearsay from your partner, you don't know what, if any, personal knowledge he has, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just before Mr. Neese sits down, can we get an address of record for his client and a confirmation that his client remains under contract to purchase that property? I believe that the contract purchaser of a property, they're a competitor of ours, these folks, that's the reason they're here. I would just like those two things confirmed on the record, the address of that site, so we can figure out the proximity to ours, we know it's not close, and also a confirmation that they do remain the contract purchaser as of this date, Mr. Warner.
And I take it the relevance is for standing purposes, correct?
Exactly right.
Thank you, Mr. Neese, you have no objection to providing that factual information?
No, it's my understanding that our client is engaged in connection with a redevelopment plan here in town.
Right, and the addresses?
I'll have to get that. I don't have that right on me. I'll get the address before this evening is finished.
You mean the address of the property to be developed?
Correct, that's part of the redevelopment plan, so.
And I think there was a question whether or not they're still under contract, was the question, have I understood?
My understanding is that they are still under contract.
Do you know what's presently on the site now?
I don't, I haven't even seen the redevelopment plan, to be honest with you, Mr. Chairman.
Because that might give us a clue on where it is, that's why I asked.
I would think that you would be aware of the redevelopment plan that's here in town.
Well, the planning board would have been involved in that process?
Yeah, that's the planning board.
Of course.
As you probably know.
That's not our board, and even if I have personal knowledge, that's not sufficient.
I understand, I'll get that information and provide it to the board.
Did you have any other inquiries, Mr. Cali?
I do not.
Attorney Warner, do you want me to clarify the actual site for the client?
Well, I think it's best if counsel gets the address and answers, provides the information. Thank you.
All right, first witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our first witness, Joe McAlwee. Mr. McAlwee is the principal with the applicant entity. We'll bring up Joe now, and we'll be off to the races. All yours, Joe. Mr. Chairman, members of the?
Take that out of the holder and hold it if you want.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Joe McAlwee. I'm the principal of development for Capital Seniors Housing. Last name is M.C., capital E.L.W.E.E. CSH was formed in 2003, so 20 years ago. We are a private equity firm with an exclusive focus on seniors housing. We have an experienced development team. We have developed over 150 assisted living communities from the ground up, and I'll get into the ones that we have developed in New Jersey shortly. We have developed more than 12,000 units in 30 years, and we have more than 65 years of experience in our development team. I have been with CSH for 10 years, with my partners Dave Ennis and Jim May, who were with me before at Sunrise Senior Living, and the closest community that we developed here was Sunrise of Basking Ridge. We build a full spectrum of senior housing, active living, independent living, assisted living, and memory care. We do not do nursing homes, but all we do is seniors housing, we don't do any other kind of development. We have dedicated equity, we're backed by two of the largest equity providers in the world, Bain Capital and the Carlyle Group. And by the way, Mr. Chairman, I have copies of my presentation I would hand out afterwards, so you can look at the facts that I'm referring to.
Why don't you hand them out now?
We can do that, as long as you promise not to look ahead.
No, 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 just hand them out now. No, we'll listen, don't worry.
The board makes no stipulations, only applicants and objectors.
You don't want to spoil the ending for yourselves.
Right, yeah, it's like reading a novel.
Exactly right. Thank you, Dan.
And I guess we're going to hand them out, we'll refer to it as Exhibit A1?
There we go. The only thing that's changed in my presentation from what Dan just held out is that new demographics came out two or three days ago, so I put the updated demographics in my presentation, which I'll read off, but it's very similar to the demographics.
As opposed to what's in the writing?
Correct, it's only off by a little bit. We have a national development footprint, because we're an East Coast firm, the three development guys live in Philly, firm is based in Washington, DC. Most of our development has been between Boston and Atlanta. We have developed three in Chicago area, California, et cetera, so we do have a national footprint, but primarily our development has been focused on the East Coast. Capital Seniors Housing is proposing an 87-unit assisted living residence licensed by the Department of Health. There are 62 units of assisted living and 25 units of memory care. The memory care residents are in a secured wing and will have access to a secured garden protected with a six-foot-high fence. CSH has received as of June 15th a certificate of need from the Department of Health. I have a copy of that, Mr. Chairman, and I'll hand that in as another exhibit if you'd like to see it, but we did receive a certificate of need from the Department of Health. The average age at entry?
Would you explain the relevance of that? The relevance of the certificate of need?
This is a licensed healthcare facility in the state of New Jersey, and every assisted living applicant has to apply to the Department of Health for a certificate of need. Certificates of need are generally in 10-bed increments. We have applied for a 100-bed certificate of need. The importance is that not only are we a licensed community, but the township will be eligible for 10% COA units based on the 10% Medicaid requirement that we have for our Department of Health license.
Okay, thank you.
The average age at entry for a typical assisted living resident is 86 years old. Residents are not able to live independently and are not capable, or are not candidates for skilled nursing care. Assisted living is licensed by the New Jersey Department of Health as an assisted living residence, that's the official acronym. Nursing homes are licensed by the New Jersey Department of Health as long-term care facilities, so there's completely different licenses, completely different staffing patterns, et cetera. The residents do not drive. Residents need help with their activities of daily living, bathing, grooming, dressing, transportation, et cetera. There will be about 30 employees on the largest full-time shift, which will be approximately 7 to 3, about 22 people on the second shift, 3 to 11, and four to five employees overnight. The healthcare staff consists of RNs, LPNs, medication care managers, and resident assistants. There also is an executive director, marketing, activities, dietary, housekeeping, receptionists, and office managers. The building is approximately 80,000 square feet and three stories. CSH has many different designs, and we will build a design that is appropriate for Long Hill and the neighbors, so we will cooperate with the town on the renderings that you're going to see later tonight to design something that's appropriate for this market. About 40% of the building, or 32,000 square feet, is common space or back of house. Amenities include common dining areas, private dining, theater, living rooms, bistro, hair salon, activity, seating areas, lounges, and other outdoor garden areas. The units range in size from 350 to about 850 square feet for two-bedroom units. The units are not self-contained, like an apartment. Units will have a refrigerator, countertops, and cabinets, but all residents are given three meals a day in a common dining area or the private dining room. Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, we've done a lot of development in New Jersey, the three guys at CSH, the development guys, either for CSH or for Sunrise Senior Living. Arbor Terrace Norwood, Arbor Terrace Mountainside, Arbor Terrace Morris Plains, Roseland, Mount Laurel, Marlton, East Brunswick, another one in Marlton, Shrewsbury, Washington Township and Bergen County, Scotch Plains, West Orange, Ulta Pan, Paramus, Wood Cliff Lake. Again, closest one here, Basking Ridge. Sunrise of West Essex, Sunrise of Wayne, Cresskill, East Brunswick, Sunrise of Madison, Chelsea of Marlboro, Sunrise of Marlboro, Sunrise of Lynn Croft, Sunrise of Morris Plains, Sunrise of Wall, Sunrise of Ulta Pan, Sunrise of Jackson, Sunrise of Randolph, and Sunrise of Edgewater. Been very active in the state of New Jersey.
All those similar sizes?
Yes, all similar sizes and all the exact same product in assisted living residence, all licensed by the Department of Health. Next couple slides in your package are maps, you'll know where the property is, but this in essence tells you that we're right behind the Walgreens off Valley Road. CSH will provide a 14-passenger van for the resident's use. CSH will also contract with a private ambulance company for non-emergency transportation. The site plan provides approximately 45 parking spaces, which is .51 spaces per unit.
I'm sorry, one more time on those numbers?
45 parking spaces, which is 5.51 spaces per unit. CSH estimates that at full occupancy, there will be approximately two 911 calls per week. Not all the 911 calls require sirens. There will be approximately two food deliveries per week and two trash pickups per week. The deliveries and trash pickups will meet the ordinances of the township for timing and noise. Why assisted living? The fastest-growing age segment in the, of the population is 85-plus. The second-fastest-growing age segment of the population is 75-plus. The 65-plus population is now 13% of the US population. The 65-plus population is expected to be 20% by the year 2050. In 2010, the number of people with Alzheimer's disease was about 5,100,000. In 2050, the number of people with Alzheimer's disease is projected to be 13,500,000. In the business, they call it the silver tsunami, 10,000 people a day turn 65. We have to prepare for the demographics which are certain. This is not a myth, these are real demographics that are crossing the country, the post-baby boom era. Why Long Hill? In 2023, these are the new demographics, Mr. Chairman, there are 13,721 households headed by 45- to 64-year-olds who earn $100,000 a year or more. That's in a five-mile radius. That's important because the 45- to 64-year-old age segment are the ones making the decisions for their 85- or 86-year-old parents. So the most important demographic for us is those adult children who are income and age qualified. In 2023, there are 3,222 households headed by 75-year-olds who earn $50,000 a year or more, within a five-mile radius of this particular site. That figure in 2028, now you'll see the silver tsunami evolve right in front of you, is going to grow to 4,198, or 5.3% per year. So the 75-plus population is growing very, very rapidly within the primary market area of this site. There are only five competitors within a five-mile radius, one of them is under construction, that's the Arbor Terrace and Basking Ridge. They are our partners, as you heard me read on many of our other sites throughout the state of New Jersey. The median income in a one-mile radius for the qualified caregivers, again, the adult children, is 185,455. Our minimum, or minimum to go forward, is 80,000, so it's about twice what we normally expect in a site, within one mile of the site. And the median home value in a one-mile radius is 633,471. Our minimum criteria is 300,000. I have a slide in there, Mr. Chairman, that shows you the exact demographics that I just read. It's from a group called ESRI, and I've highlighted the figures that I just spoke about in the As I said, we know who our competitors are, and right now, the occupancy rate of those competitors post-COVID, this is a pretty remarkable figure, is 88.5% for these five competitors that are here. Most markets you see, 75, 80s, people are still, competitors are still, and CSA is still trying to get that post-COVID occupancy rate up, so it's very, very high for the four existing competitors and the one that's proposed here. The Arbor Terrace of Basking Ridge is 3.1 miles away on Valley Road, so it's not in the immediate areas, it's right outside what we would call the primary market area. They're under construction, I think they would open in about four to six months. Mr. Chairman, we think this is a good use for the community. It's a first-class, state-of-the-art community, it's an inherently beneficial use. The site would be adjacent to township-owned recreation land, providing for an opportunity for intergenerational play between the seniors and youngsters on the recreational land. It's a tremendous demographic now, and it's also a tremendous demographics for the future. It's a very low-traffic generator. The township will get 10 COA units based on the 10% Medicaid requirement that we have. There's no impact on your school system, and we are a for-profit property taxpayer. Mr. Chairman, that's my testimony, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions from you or anybody in the audience.
Before we go to the board, is there any, any one of our experts have any questions? I know it's not in your realm, but, no, okay. Okay, go ahead.
I just wondered if I may, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned about the fact that there'd be a 14-person passenger van and private ambulance for non-emergency calls. You also mentioned anticipated two 911 calls per week, but suffice to say, there will be a need for public EMT ambulance, emergency access, et cetera, correct?
Yes, sir, this is their primary residence, and they would be calling 911 if there was an emergency.
Okay, and traffic or someone else will be handling emergency access and circulation for the site, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question. How did you come up with that figure or that estimating of two 911 calls a week?
We own 45 or so communities. We talk to Arbor all the time. We talk to Chelsea Senior Living. We ask them directly, how many are you getting on an average across the country? So that's, that's where it comes from.
Okay, so it comes from other facilities?
Our two providers and other facilities, yes.
Okay. Any other more questions?
I have a few questions. I was going to ask questions also on the two 911, 911 calls per week. Is that for emergency? Is there a separate call for ambulatory care or transportation, let's say, to hospitals or non-emergency?
Any non-emergency would be handled through our private ambulance service that we would contract with. We would contract with them, yes. Or family members or staff, but generally, it's the private ambulance service that we would contract with.
Okay. And then you mentioned that your property taxpayers, your for-profit property taxpayers, ADLOR tax in every way is a normal business we pay.
Yes, sir.
No agreements with the town or?
Not asking for a pilot or anything like that. This is a for-profit property taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have some questions. So you say in your presentation that your residents don't drive, but there's only going to be one 14-passenger van for transportation for those residents. How are they expected to participate in the community if they don't have transportation?
Good question. They're 86 and frail, so they're not going out into the community as much as they would like or the family members would like or we would like. But we have an activities director who schedules trips to various places throughout the township. And I would like to say that as much as we want our residents to be part of Long Hill, we want Long Hill to be part of our community. It's very typical that we would have Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, or Rotary Clubs come into our common area. So they will be going out into the community. That's healthy for them, and that's scheduled through the 14-passenger van or their sons and daughters who come to take them out of the community.
So do the residents, putting aside the memory loss sect, do they have autonomy to come and go as they please?
If you're not in the memory care unit, you do have autonomy to come and go. Is it practical? No, they're 86 and frail, and that's why they're in assisted living. But occasionally, you'll get somebody who's 86 and frail, who wants to live in our community, who is capable of going out into the community. We don't encourage them to drive. We tell them, children, we don't want them to drive. That's why the van is there, and that's why we offer those services. So it's possible because it's their primary residence, but generally, they're 86 and frail, and their children or their physician has taken their keys away.
So it's possible they'll have a car there?
It's possible, but we can restrict that also.
And you're saying they're, they're 86?
Six. On average, they're 86 at entry, yes.
Would that be the minimum age enter?
No, there's no minimum age. In my career, I've seen a person who is 44 with MS come into a community. But generally, the average age of all these communities that we built is 86 years old.
And again, that's based on the prior?
150 that we've done and all the other ones that we own.
But hypothetically, you could have residents walking in that area, the Valley Road area where they'd need to access different, you know, places that they might be going, Walgreens, ShopRite?
You could, but if you look at our site plan carefully, we're probably, I don't have the exact figure, maybe 1,000 feet off Valley Road, and there's topography coming down the driveway. So is it possible? Yes. Is it, it's more likely that an adult child will be taking their mother or father down to Walgreens or across the street. It's more likely that they would drive from that location than walk. It's possible? Sure. Yeah, everything's possible, but it's very, very unlikely.
You had mentioned visitors coming, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and whatnot. During the course of a week, how many would you expect, including physical therapists, doctors? What's, what's the expected number of visitors per week?
Not as many as we would like. Let me answer it that way. You know, you encourage people to come into the community, encourage volunteers to come in. But I would say over the course of a 16-hour day, if you will, when the residents are not sleeping, a couple per hour. Now, Mr. Shropshire, who is our traffic expert, is going to testify on the number of people coming into the community at certain hours and the number of people coming out. Part of that figure that he gives you will be the visitors and physical therapy. Again, it's not as intense as a hospital or nursing home, so you don't have the physicians coming in like you would have in a nursing home or a hospital. Generally, you might have a physical therapy company that's based in our community. They may have one physical therapist in there that has a separate office, so the residents can use that office so they're not going out into the community. So the figures that you're, that you'll hear later include staff, visitors, and any professional visitors coming in.
Can you talk more about the precautions that are taken for the memory loss residents?
There's a special lockdown area that I'll let the architects talk about, but it's also enclosed by a six-foot-high fence. Those residents, their garden area is within the building in a six-foot-high fence. So they're, it's a secured area where they can't come or go out of that area. Family member or a staff member would need a code to get into that area. But the residents, I hate to use the word lockdown because it sounds so cruel, but it's a secured area with a six-foot-high fence on the outside.
And do they use the same dining facilities as the rest of the residents, or it's all separate?
Completely separate.
In the application, you say five of the 87 units are handicap-accessible. It sounds like that there's a need for more ADLs, that there's going to be frail residents. How did, what does five handicap-accessible mean when you put it in the application?
Five handicap-accessible parking spaces was probably, or are you talking about units?
Five of the 87 units will be handicap-accessible on the?
I'll let the architects testify to that, but that's probably a minimum requirement from the state and New Jersey Department of Health.
What he meant was, did you mean living units, parking spots?
We have both in the present. There are handicap-accessible parking spaces, but there's also handicap-accessible units within the community.
Aren't they all? Wouldn't they all be handicapped?
No, there's certain radius requirements. There's different space requirements for that. They're all accessible, but they're not the exact same turning radius, if you will, for wheelchairs, et cetera.
And how did you come up on the ratio of AL to, to memory care units?
You know what? You know, I've been doing this for 30 years, and no one's ever asked me that question, but I'm going to, I'm going to give it to you right now. There's staffing requirements for assisted living that we have internally and staffing requirements for memory care. Memory care is typically one care manager for every eight people. If you have 25 units, you may have 27 or 28 people. At 93% occupancy, if you just back it all back, we figured there's going to be about 24 residents in memory care. 24 divided by three is the eight. So it's kind of a mathematical for optimum staffing. Assisted living just filled out the balance of the building. So you solve for that first floor memory care area, and then the rest of the building is filled with assisted living. Some of our other providers have three, like Arbor Terrace. They have three different classifications. They have assisted living. They have what they call bridges, which is light dementia, if you will, and then a dementia wings. They have three different areas, three different eating areas, dining rooms. This community will be managed by Chelsea Senior Living. It's all over New Jersey, and the closest one they have is in Warren, I believe. They like that 24 memory care resident and six or so assisted living. That's their ratio.
One other thing, staffing. So have you been able to fully staff up your other facilities in New Jersey? Or you had to use contracts, nursing, or?
You know what? I haven't had that question either, but that's one of the most pertinent questions today because staffing is, is one of the biggest challenges for assisted living and nursing homes. And if communities don't have the staff that's, employees, they have to go out to what they call agency and hire an outside firm to come in and supplement the staff. So yes, we're fully staffed every day. We want them to be 100% employees rather than agency, and that's turning over. Through COVID, there was a lot of agency. Right after COVID, there was a little bit of agency. That's coming down back to normal. As the economy tightens up a little bit, our staffing patterns are closer to 100% employees now. Thank you.
I assume all these staffs are background-checked and appropriately vetted?
Yes, sir. Not only for your protection, my protection, but also the management company that, and the Department of Health licensing requirements for, for those checks.
The 14-passenger van, how many trips a week will that be taking?
You know, I would say that maybe it's two a day, maybe one in the morning and one in the afternoon. So what's that, 14 or so in a week? And again, you would hope, depending on how active the community is with outside events and how active the residents are, you'd hope for more. But I would say generally, one or two a day.
Are they all for entertainment, or are some of them are going to, say, ShopRite?
They could go to the ShopRite correctly, or we do have hair care in our community. Some people may want to go out, but there's pharmacy visits, doctor visits, just going to a park, visits, that type of thing. So it's recreation and necessities.
So you talked about the averages, two 911 calls a week for your facilities. How many times are the police called for wandering residents kind of?
I'd say the wandering is rare because that would be associated with the dementia wing, which is in a secured area with a fence. I would say that that's very, very rare.
Any other questions? Again, our experts, no questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, yeah, all right. I'm sorry. The member of the public, which is the objector's attorney, he wishes to ask you some questions.
Sure.
Is there another mic? Maybe, maybe you want to grab that mic up there, if you can go up there and talk on that one. Because that one is live. Yeah, that one, that we?
This one?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, that one is working.
This is the first we have an objector's attorney in a witness chair.
Well, the mic works, use it.
You know, I got to tell you, it feels kind of good up here. The shoe fits.
Good evening, sir. I think you know me.
I do.
My name's Arthur Neese.
Yes.
Put that microphone closer to you so you don't have to lean toward it.
Pick me up here.
It doesn't move? The base doesn't move?
The base doesn't move. So I'll try and lean into it.
Thank you.
Your application seeks a use variance from this board, correct?
That's right.
Have you had any discussions with the town concerning changing the zoning for this use variance?
I'm sure we've had discussions. We think that the use variance is the, is the method of approval that I've always gone through. Every single one of the sites that I've had in New Jersey has been through the use variance. It's a pretty standard way for application for an inherently beneficial use.
Well, I would think you would want to avoid a variance if you could.
No, not for an inherently beneficial use. We've done it, I've done it 150 times and 30 times in New Jersey. I'm not, I'm not just trying to avoid it at all.
Well, then, the building itself is somewhat tall. Why, why are you building it so tall if you have all of this space?
Building a 35-foot, I think, average height, and that'll be talked about by the architect. We're building it tall for a good reason. The taller a building, three stories, the shorter the hallway lengths, which is better for the 86-year-old frail people that live with us. If you had a one-story building and it's sprawled out over a long, larger site, you'd have a much longer walking distance for the residents. So actually, the three-story building is the most efficient building to build. Four stories, a different building code. Three stories is the most efficient and most beneficial to the residents.
In terms of the ambulance that you were asked about by members of the board, this is a private service that you will be paying for?
Yes, sir.
If the, if there is a 911 call, who pays for that?
The township, I mean, whatever, however, the township volunteer service is funded.
And, and what, if any, steps will you be taking in order to reduce the dependency on the, on the township providing your project?
Well, just like every other assisted living, we staff it to the 30 people that are on shift number one, 22 on shift number two, and overnight staffing. And you can make the argument, I don't have any facts for this, but you can make the argument that if your mother was in Basking Ridge or Warren, living by herself, she may be calling 911 more than if your mother was in a home with a whole staff and camaraderie of companionship of, of the other people in the community. So it's not a net two theoretically. I've never been able to quantify that. But people do come from the community where they are more at risk for calling 911 than they would be if they're in a community where there, where there's designated caregivers.
In terms of the number, I don't think I heard from you the number of people, employees, you would actually have on-site at any one point, at any given point in time.
You weren't listening because I said 30 on shift one, 22 on shift two, and four to five overnight.
Okay, and my apologies if I didn't hear you on that. And do you know how many of those folks you are expecting will be parking on-site?
All of them.
So you have sufficient parking?
There may be some people that take a bus. Of course we do. We wouldn't have designed this plan if we didn't have sufficient parking, and our traffic expert will testify to that and our civil engineer.
In terms of what the residents do, I know you mentioned, see, I did hear you talk about activity directors.
Right.
What are the, what are these people going to be doing during the course of the day? Not so much the memory care folks, but the AL folk.
Well, there's activities both inside and outside.
What kind of the, what kind of activities are they going to be engaged in?
Well, music therapy, physical therapy, camaraderie, games, whatever the activity director plans, memory-type games, watching television, the same thing you and I would do on a weekend. That's what they're going to be doing in their home.
I do a lot of gardening on the move.
Well, you'd be surprised. We have a little outside garden area, too.
Okay, good. In terms of deliveries, you said there were food deliveries twice a week and that there would be refuse pickups twice a week. Do you have times of day for those?
Whatever the township requirements are. So if they, if the township says after seven or after eight and before four, that's what our times will be.
And then in terms of the, the studies that you did in order to determine that this is a good area, how did you, what, what is the nature of the, the background investigation? You said four other competitors nearby. How far away mileage-wise are those?
Again, I talked about a five-mile radius around the site. All of them are within a five-mile radius around the site.
Is that an industry standard?
Five miles, yes, it is.
That is an industry standard.
Especially, it's an industry standard, although you can make it an argument in North Jersey or in Manhattan or in Westchester County or in Philly that the market area may be closer to three miles. It's how far and how you navigate traffic that really dictates where residents will go for senior living. Five miles is the industry standard. If you're down in Raleigh, North Carolina, maybe the primary market area would be closer to seven miles. But for this area, in my testimony, it's five miles.
And, and I think you used, you used the term minimum criterion of $300,000. What, what does that refer to?
The housing values in a one-mile radius.
And what will the cost of being in your facility be for a resident? And in other words, are people going to come from the Long Hill area for this?
Sure.
So what is the general?
Whatever the market area, whatever Sunrise of Basking Ridge and Chelsea of Warren and all the other competitive sites are charging, it'll be a competitive rate.
Excuse me, but could I caution you two not to talk on top of each other? You're tending, you're tending to cut his questions off.
Sorry.
Only because the, when, if someone listens to this on tape, we want them to hear it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finish your answer.
I think I did.
Okay. I, I think my question was?
Your question was, will residents from Long Hill be coming in here? Yes.
And, and what will the cost generally for those residents be?
Yeah, I don't think that has anything to do with the use variance.
Sir, before you answered, I think I'll take that as an objection, or at least I'll advise the chair, and I'm sure he'll take it as an objection, too. Do you have a proffer as to the relevancy, if any, of that question? For a zoning determination on, on use variance and bulk variance relief.
If the board is considering this as a facility to be involved in this town, I would think that the board would want to know what it's going to cost people to reside in this, in this property. This is a, this is a facility they're seeking a use variance for.
Mr. Callie, your objection still stands?
It does.
Yeah, I, I'd advise respectfully to objectors counsel, I don't believe that that's a relevant inquiry for the purposes of this board making a determination on site plan and, and... inquiry for the purposes of this board making a determination on site plan and use and bulk variance relief.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Might want to tell me what you're proposing?
No, no, sir, sir, and I would also...
We're done with that line of questioning.
It was a softball, Mr. Chairman, he had to.
You don't want to defend that, and you don't want to repeat that.
So if you're not going to answer that question because of the objection, I understand that. What percentage of the households that you studied meet the age and income criteria for the proposed development?
I apologize, but you just were not paying attention. I went through each category and told you whether they were qualified caregivers and how many households there were, how many qualified seniors there were at income levels, what the housing value was, and what the median income was. I went through all that in my presentation. If you'd like me to repeat it, I'm happy to.
No, and I apologize that you speak a little too rapidly for me to take notes on all of that, so my apologies for that. Are you aware that the township adopted a redevelopment plan and that the focus of that redevelopment plan was an assisted living facility?
Before you answer that, Joe, again, Mr. Chairman, I'm not certain what the relevance is. We're here prosecuting the use variance application before the Board of Adjustment by choice. Whether Mr. McElwes is aware of the happenings around town at the governing body level is completely irrelevant to this proceeding, and it has nothing to do with his direct testimony.
Mr. Nice, do you have a proffer? Not withstanding the fact that you can raise that issue, do you have a proffer notwithstanding the fact that you can raise this and other facts if you wish to during an objector's case or comment period?
No, I mean, again, the whole purpose of that relates to the fact that this is a town, you folks are in a town, and there was a redevelopment plan.
There's a zone, if you want to make that public comment as part of an objector's case, if you perceive it to be relevant, that's fine, whether this particular witness knows of these apparent facts, I'm only saying apparent because they have to be demonstrated, or not, I'm not hearing what the relevancy is for this.
Okay, I accept that, I understand that. I just, in looking at this situation and realizing that this...
If you understand the objection, and the objection, I think is being sustained by the chair and the board, maybe you want to proceed to the next question.
I don't think I have any further questions, but thank you.
Thank you.
I assume only of this witness you will have questions of other witnesses.
Mr. Chairman, you've done this before.
Did the objector's attorney get the address that we requested?
In fact, I do, and thank you for reminding me. That address is 1106-1122 Valley Road. It's also known as Block 11401, Lot 7, and I'm told that some people know that as a car wash site.
Okay. And you wouldn't happen, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to know offhand whether or not that's within 200 feet of the subject property?
I do not know.
Do you know if that property got the 200-foot notice?
I do not know that.
Yeah, then the current owner would know that.
Correct.
The next witness? We'll go to our next witness. We ask that a redacted copy of the purchase and sale agreement be submitted to the board, or at least a written confirmation from Mr. Neese's office, that they are still under contract as of June 20th, 2023. My understanding is they may not be. That is a jurisdictional issue, I think. I think there would be no standing if there is no contract purchaser status of Mr. Neese's client. So, Mr. Warner, I ask that that be tendered to the board either after this meeting, whether or not we conclude tonight.
And that may, or may not be, frankly, probably is not dispositive of standing, but it may be relevant to standing, but I think the appropriate procedure that I would recommend to the chair and the board is that Mr. Neese respond to that request, albeit by providing the information or an objection and the basis for the objection, and then it can be pursued at the appropriate time. But I recognize that at least there's a request made and a contention by the applicant that it's at least relevant to standing.
I would concur that perhaps just to alleviate any question, you would want to produce a contract.
We'll take that as the, sometimes the judges say, under advisement.
Thank you, thank you.
And the issue, you know, Mr. Warner, very well, is I don't know who they are here on behalf of, if they're not here on behalf of a property owner, a citizen, a resident, whether corporate or individual, or contract purchaser.
Well, I think he mentioned his client. Maybe you can reiterate who your client is, Mr. Neese, for standing purposes?
Do it in front of a mic, so we can hear you.
Yes, maybe you weren't listening, I indicated that my client is March Development.
And do they own the property?
I said to you that I did not know the answer to the question, and you've put that on the record.
Okay, no argument, the chair's told you, no argument. But for purposes of standing, March Development is a developer that may have, am I correct? May have a property interest in property at 1106, 1122 Valley Road in this township.
That is correct.
Okay, is there any other basis for the standing other than the property interest that they may have?
I don't know whether or not there is any kind of agreement in connection with redevelopment.
Understood vis-à-vis that same property?
Correct.
Okay, so to the extent there is, or may be, an issue with respect to standing, that can be further addressed by you on behalf of your client vis-à-vis argument, but also documents and/or facts that might support that position?
That is also correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before our next witness, one more thing, you can have a seat, this won't require any answers, but notice one out in April of this public hearing. It's been about two months since then. I'm still hearing a lot of "I don't knows," "I'm not sure" from the objector.
We understand.
Yeah, okay, enough said there, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our project engineer, Dan Chenal, Dynamic Engineering, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we'll just qualify him, so.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Daniel Chenal, that is S.E.H.N.A.L. I am a principal of the firm, Dynamic Engineering, located at 245 Main Street, Chester, New Jersey. I am a graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I've earned a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I have over a decade of experience in the preparation of various commercial, residential, and industrial site plans and associated applications throughout the region, which includes multiple senior living projects for this client in particular. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as several other states, my license is in good standings. I have not testified before this board in the past, however, I have testified well over 100 different times between different municipalities and boards throughout the region.
Including on behalf of Capitol seniors, is that right?
That is correct.
And your licenses are current?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Neese, no objection to the board accepting this gentleman as a engineer, civil engineer for purposes of this application?
I have no objection.
And we declare you qualified, thank you.
I appreciate that. So before I get started this evening, I'll just identify my first exhibit. This is actually Sheet 2 within the site plan set that was submitted in conjunction with this application, so I'm not sure if you want me to mark this as it was already submitted.
If it hasn't been changed in any way, you don't have to.
It has not, but for the benefit of the board, it is Sheet 2 of the site plan set dated, or titled Aerial Map. It is dated March 28th, 2022, and last revised March 31st, 2023. So just for orientation purposes, north would be considered to the left-hand side of the page. The property itself is identified in the center of the site with the hard yellow angles or lines. It is two lots, consisting of about 11 and a half acres in two separate zones. So to the north, we have undeveloped wooded area with PSENG utility easement within the C conservation zone. To the south, we have Valley Road with various retail and commercial uses beyond, which are located within the BD and PVO zones, and then there's some additional residential uses located within the R5 zone beyond that. To the west, we have a medical office and a banquet center located in the BD zone, and then to the east, we have undeveloped wooded area within the P, the Green Acres, or future recreational park site with a funeral home and some various retail uses beyond. So generally, it's a pedestrian-friendly location with walkable amenities, including the Walgreens that's a part of the site, multiple shopping centers, Township Hall, making it an ideal location for a use of this nature. So continuing with existing improvements around the site, Valley Road, which the site fronts on, is a county road, County Road 512, which is a four-lane, undivided roadway under county jurisdiction with a 35 mile an hour speed limit. There is one lane in each direction with dedicated turning lanes at a signalized intersection. That signalized intersection is at Plainfield Road, which is another county roadway, and it provides full movement signalized intersection or signalized access to the site. The site driveway makes up the fourth leg of that three roadway intersection. And the existing driveway to the site is about 45 feet in width with a 100-foot wide curb cut, and there's dedicated turning lanes out of the site. So currently, the site is partially developed with a single-story Walgreens, about 13,000 square feet, and that Walgreens is within a 2.9-acre lease area that's associated with the larger block. That has 62 existing parking spaces and then various landscaping improvements, as well as a large above-ground detention basin that is within that lease area directly to the rear of that Walgreens. The majority, the remainder of the site is, contains wooded areas, some environmentally sensitive areas, there's wetlands back there, but the improvements that exist on the site makes up about 21% of existing impervious surface coverage. As I mentioned, there's a wetlands area as well as a flood hazard area that is located essentially to the northwestern portion of the site. That triangle lot that you see identified on the aerial map is essentially environmentally sensitive area, there's wetlands, flood hazard areas, which will remain undisturbed. The wetlands have been classified as an extraordinary resource value, which means they're wetlands with an associated 150-foot transition area or buffer, and that has been verified with a letter of interpretation from the DEP that we received for this application. There are some steep slope areas that are identified that were a result of the construction of the Walgreens multiple years back, and those are identified on, within our plan set, and I'll speak a little bit more about those critical areas shortly. Stormwater generated by the existing developed areas are collected by various on-site inlets, conveyed to that basin, and then discharged out to the wetland area. Couple easements associated with the site, in addition to that Walgreens lease area, there is a 65-foot wide access easement which envelopes the existing driveway, which allows access from Valley Road to the Walgreens, and then there's a 20-foot wide gas easement, providing gas service to that Walgreens, and then also a 10-foot wide site triangle easement that's along the frontage of that site to make clear sightlines for the site. Again, the site is split-zoned, the larger lot where the Walgreens is, is within the BD Downtown Valley Commercial District, and then the triangle piece, again, is in the Conservation District. The existing use, which is retail, the Walgreens, is a permitted use, however, there is one existing nonconformity that comes to mind, it's the front yard setback, so maximum of 50 feet is permitted, the Walgreens is just over that at 50.9 feet. So I'll switch over to my next exhibit. So this exhibit I will actually mark, because it was not included within the site plan set, I will mark this A1.
A2.
A2.
We can identify it, Dan, by title, and we'll give it today's date of June 20th.
This is titled Site Plan Rendering.
You can move that mic if you need to carry it.
Thank you. This is a Site Plan Rendering, essentially it's just a colorized version of the site plan, Sheet 5, that was submitted in conjunction with this application. Site Plan Rendering, it is dated May 2nd, 2023, same orientation as the existing, the aerial map that I just showed with north to the left-hand side of the page. So under proposed conditions, one thing I wanted to mention is we're proposing a subdivision. What we're first going to do is consolidate those two existing lots, that triangle piece in the C-zone, as well as the larger site that the Walgreens currently sits on, and then we're going to subdivide out that Walgreens lease area. We're going to subdivide out exactly the way that lease area lies, which is 2.91 acres. I know it's not exactly rectangular, but it's very difficult to amend the lease area associated with Walgreens, so rather than going through the legal difficulties of amending their lease area, we're just going to follow those existing lease lines and create a new lot for that Walgreens. It'll still have access through that access easement in the existing driveway, which will now become part of the applicant's lot, but then there's no other improvements proposed on the Walgreens lease area. We're not even touching any parts of that property.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if you know, would you be creating any nonconformities that don't presently exist with respect to the proposed lot that will encompass the Walgreens when it is subdivided, if it is subdivided?
None that we have identified, so we took a look at that, it's a conforming lot, the impervious surface coverage is still matched, the setbacks, there is an existing nonconformity with the setback, but that won't change.
Which is not being exacerbated.
That is correct. And again, we're not touching that property at all, we're making sure to not disturb anything within that lease area because the Walgreens has very specific guidelines within their lease.
What is the significance of subdividing so that the driveway area is no longer part of the subdivided-out lot?
Well, that driveway is a common element to the site, you'll hear a little bit more of it, because there's going to be other items connecting to that driveway, but since that driveway is within an access easement that provides access to the Walgreens, it's to the benefit of Walgreens, without knowing the history of the site, it sounds like the intent was always to have that Walgreens be subdivided out, which is why they placed that driveway within an access easement to provide access to the Walgreens.
I'm really sorry, I was listening.
You're all right.
Could just repeat that, because I didn't understand it. I did listen, but I didn't understand what you said.
Exactly. So there's an existing access easement that envelopes the existing driveway throat entering the site, it's a crosshatch on the site plan?
Plainfield Avenue goes straight into...
Correct, making up the fourth leg of that intersection.
You want to take the property that the Walgreens is on and remove it from the whole site that includes the driveway?
Correct. That is correct, so...
It'll go in the driveway.
That would be on the applicant's lot at that point.
So is it still an easement, then?
It'll still be an easement dividing access, correct.
But you would be charged with maintaining it, allowing it, and...
I'm not sure of the specifics of who would be in charge of maintaining that driveway, there might be an agreement already with Walgreens where they maintain that driveway, but I'm sure that would be worked out within the lease between the two and the agreement within the access easement. The access easement, I haven't seen it or reviewed it, but it might have requirements for who must maintain that lot, and I'd be more than happy to look into that for you and provide you that information.
That seems as a matter of efficiency for, just to get your real estate deal done rather than ownership, it's not relevant who owns that, is that right? It's really to give you a permanent easement to the proposed site?
Yeah, it's so Walgreens can continue to access their site, because that driveway is outside of the lease area associated with that Walgreens, so when the current owner provided that lease area for the Walgreens, that driveway was already not within that lease area, so that agreement was likely set up so that Walgreens can have access through the site.
That's the way it exists today.
Correct, absolutely. So that subdivision will now be two lots, the Walgreens lot would be the 2.9 acre lease area, then the remaining lot, the triangle piece, as well as the undeveloped portion and the driveway, would consist of 8.72 acres. So under proposed conditions, we'll be developing the site, as Mr. McElwes testified to, with a three-story assisted living building, which is identified in the center of the sheet, kind of that tan-orange color, about 420 feet in length by 80 feet in width, consisting of 87 units and 93 beds. So a few of those units will have shared beds, which would make up the Medicaid units, there's five Medicaid units, which results in 10 color credits for the township, which Mr. McElwes testified to. The building footprint itself, including canopies, would be about 32,000 square feet, 32,204 to be exact, and the building coverage for the new proposed lot would be 8.5%, which is compliant. The height, we're seeking a devariance for the height, it is two stories, 35 feet permitted, and then our existing conditions will be three stories, 45 feet, measured from the lowest ground elevation around that proposed building. Access to the site will still be provided by that full movement signalized intersection, which has those two exit lanes, dedicated exit lanes. Access to the Walgreens, as I mentioned, will remain unchanged, and then access to the proposed development would be if you continued straight up that driveway, and it'll be a boulevard-style entrance, meaning it'll be a nice landscape island in the beginning, in the center of it, providing separation between the egress and ingress lanes. To the site itself, 24 feet, and that would provide access to a 24-foot wide, two-way driveway, or I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. So in addition, making up that third leg of the intersection, you'll see on our site plan, directly to the east, the eastern leg of that, we're proposing a 24-foot wide, two-way driveway, providing access to the township, the own piece of property that is identified as Green Acres and potential future recreational use, and that will be in a 40-foot easement. It's important to note that we show it on our plan as developed, but the developer does not plan to construct that at this point, we're just going to grant the easement to the township, we'll install the stormwater improvements that's within there, and rough grade it, but it won't be developed at that point, we'll wait for the town to... We'll wait for the township when they're ready to come in and be able to provide a roadway and sidewalk to their site utilizing the third leg of that existing intersection.
Did you say, I mean, you said something feet easement?
Forty-foot easement.
Forty foot?
Correct.
Linear feet?
Yes, wide, correct.
And the width is twenty-four feet wide?
The driveway itself within there is proposed at twenty-four feet wide. So forty-foot easement, twenty-four-foot-wide driveway. And then there'll be some space on either side for sidewalk, landscape improvements.
Forty feet is the width?
Of the easement, forty foot.
Not the linear run, the width.
The width, that's what I'm saying, okay.
Apologize.
That's okay, forty-foot wide, okay, got it, thank you.
Absolutely. So we don't plan to construct the actual paved portion of the driveway with the curbing, just as stormwater improvements. And we'll continue our sidewalk, which I'll mention shortly, through that easement to provide access to the proposed senior living development. So within the site, once you enter the site, you'll have a paved parking area with Belgium block curb around it. You'll have a twenty-four-foot-wide, two-way circular circulation areas or lanes throughout the site. We're proposing twenty-one parking spaces, or I'm sorry. There's twenty-one parking spaces, including four EV parking spaces at the front of the building, which is directly to the south. And I know it mentioned in the ordinance, we're seeking a variance for that because in, except for the case of single-family residents, no off-street parking or loading shall be permitted within the front yard. Technically, we're behind the front yard, but we still have parking in front of the building. So I believe there is a variance there. But it really is how the site lays out. We always want to make sure that we have enough parking that is near essentially the main entrance to the building. So rather than putting all the parking behind, we put the parking up front, which is closer to the main entrance to the building, to provide a shorter walking distance for residents and visitors in the site. But we also have parking behind. There's twelve parking spaces, including four accessible, handicap-accessible parking spaces along the western portion of the building. And then additional twelve parking spaces behind the building, which then continues to the eastern side of the building, which provides access to the receiving area. That's where our trash enclosure is located, that's where the receiving zone is, which provides adequate access for fire truck, the anticipated delivery vehicle, which I'll mention shortly, as well as enough room for turning around of ambulants, the garbage truck, fire truck. And I'll talk about that shortly. There's also a one-way, eighteen-foot-wide pickup drop-off area directly at the western portion of the building, which is the main entrance. There'll be a port-a-cachere cover over that pickup drop-off area that is high enough to accommodate an ambulance, so an ambulance can get underneath there. And that's the main area where the van would be coming to pick up residents to keep them out of the weather, shorter distance to and from the front entrance of the building itself. The parking circulation area was designed to accommodate a ladder truck, as far as fire truck, as well as a single unit forty-foot-wide box truck for deliveries. No tractor-trailers are intended to access this site, just be a normal box truck for deliveries. Also, a front-loading garbage truck has ability to access this site and the ambulance, as I mentioned. There's an eighty-foot-long by sixteen-foot-wide dedicated receiving area, which will allow that forty-foot-long box truck to back into the area typically about twice a week to drop off any supplies or goods that the development would need. And then again, the garbage truck has access to a eighteen-foot-wide by twenty-eight-foot-deep trash enclosure, which would be coming two times a week. There'll be two separate dumpsters in there, one for trash, one for recycling. But we design our trash enclosures to act as a two-fold screen for the emergency generator, which I'll talk to shortly. So that masonry enclosure, which is designed to complement the architecture of the building, it'll be decorative in nature, but it also hides dumpsters and the emergency generator that would be provided for this site and also helps reduce the sound. It adds some additional sound attenuation for that generator. There'll also be two proposed outdoor courtyard amenity spaces. One is that fully enclosed memory courtyard that Mr. McElwee testified to, as well as an assisted living courtyard, which is a little bit more open, just to provide some outdoor space for the residents to enjoy the environment. These proposed developments and the associated improvements will be placed outside of the required one-hundred-and-fifty-foot wetlands transition area, as well as an additional deed-restricted area that was put into place when the Walgreens was constructed as part of their wetlands permitting. So we don't need any additional permits from the DEP for any type of wetlands disturbance. We have that LOI, and we intend to stay completely outside of that area. To increase the, or to mitigate for the increased stormwater generated, we have two proposed basins, one of which will be consisting of pervious pavement, which I'll talk about shortly. And then the other of which is an above-ground bioretention basin, which is in the front portion of the site, which will be planted with trees. So it'll look more like a landscaped area than just a basin with like a sand bottom or something like that. So it does provide some visual aspect as well. There is one proposed sign, freestanding sign associated with this development, which is an additional variance. That sign will be about eight-and-a-half feet tall by just under six feet in width. So we're looking at about forty-nine square feet overall. However, the sign face, which will be in the center of that, is just over twenty-three square foot. So it is a tasteful sign. It's meant to complement, again, the architecture of the building, but it serves the purpose of identifying that site. Since we're set back off the roadway a little bit, we want to make sure that especially emergency personnel or visitors can identify the site, know where to turn in, especially when we're set back off the roadway a little bit, just to really help identify and draw attention to the site. But again, nothing big and gaudy. It'll be a small site, a sign, externally illuminated, which will complement the architecture of the building.
Where's that sign placed?
That will be placed directly to the west of the.
Can you take the mic out of that holder?
I'm sorry. Directly to the west of the entrance to the site on that driveway.
Visible by Valley Road?
Yes, yes, sir.
Did you say eight-and-a-half feet high and five?
Five and three-quarters wide.
Okay. So I think the, if I'm reading the one correctly, it looks to be eight-and-a-half feet wide and.
I'm sorry, I think I have it backwards. So eight-and-a-half feet wide, five, just under six feet tall.
So it's rectangle?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And what's the wording on the sign?
So I believe our landscape architects details have that sign. And essentially, we'll just say Chelsea Senior Living. I'm not sure if there is a sign face on it yet, but it's just identifying the managing partner.
It's the typical sign that you see outside the Chelsea Senior Living?
So we are proposing some grading associated with the site. If you're familiar with it, it is significantly higher than Valley Road. So we do have some cuts associated with this. We wanted to make it an ADA-compliant site, so to provide ADA-compliant access, sidewalk access, which is required by building code from Valley Road to the site itself. We will have to lower the site a little bit. So associated with that, we'll have two retaining walls. One retaining wall would be located on the eastern border of the property. That's going to be a taller wall. That's going to be about ten-and-a-half feet at its highest point. And then on top of that, there'll be a six-foot fence to help screen the development and also provide some fall protection. So we are seeking a variance for proposing the fence that exceeds, I believe it's six feet in height on the side yards. But again, that is just due to the existing constraints associated with the site and making sure that we provide an ADA-compliant access, maintain those same drainage patterns. And then we have a small retaining wall that is about four feet in height that is on the western side of development, and that'll be a fill wall. So on the west side, we'll be on the high side of the wall. On the east side, we'll be set down below the wall, and the township parkland would be on the higher side of that wall. Both of which will be, most likely be modular blocks, so decorative in nature. So not a big ugly, just plain concrete wall. So it adds some visual appeal to the site as well. And then the drainage patterns will be completely maintained. As far as bulk requirements, we do comply with all the setback requirements, with the exception of the front yard. The township requires or allows a maximum front yard setback of fifty feet. We are two-hundred-and-ninety-six feet setback. And really, that's due to the existing constraints of that narrowness of the remainder of the lot. So by providing, if we would slide that building all the way up within fifty feet of the roadway, we wouldn't have room to get that driveway, snake the driveway through the site. And also, I think the intent, our planner talked about it a little bit more, but I think the intent of having that fifty-foot setback is really more for retail-type of use. But with a residential use for the safety and the tranquility of our residents, we want to push it back a little bit from the roadway so it's setback further. We don't need to be right up in the road to essentially advertise the building. We have the sign there. So it provides, you know, a little bit more of a tranquil feel when you set it back from the road. And we'll still landscape in front of there with a nice basin that we'll have planted. So it will add some nice streetscape element along Valley Road next to that Walgreens.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The, would it be also the case that compliance with the fifty-foot max front yard setback would impact, if not eliminate, the ability to have the access?
To the township.
You know where I'm going. You guessed correctly. If it went me slower, the, yeah, from the existing driveway to the township-owned property?
Exactly. We would impact the existing access easement to Walgreens and would also not be able to provide that third leg, providing access through a township-owned easement to their lot. That's correct.
And that third leg for the municipal lot, that access is in the desired location of the township from prior discussion?
Yes, yep, we've met with the town, discussed that access location. That was the intent, to have a four-legged intersection inside the site, providing access to the senior living development, the Walgreens, and then the township-owned parkland.
Thank you.
Of course. Again, the height of the building would be another variance that we're seeking, which I mentioned. We're also seeking a variance for the maximum floor-area ratio. For a lot that's greater than one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, the max FAR is ten-thousand plus three percent of the area over one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. So the maximum allowable for our site in particular would be sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet, whereas we propose seventy-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty square feet. And you'll hear a little bit more about that from our planner, as well as our architect, how the square footage of that, of the maximum FAR came to be. Additionally, seeking a variance for the required buffer width. This is a minor variance, which I feel we could comply with. We're required to provide at least five feet of width from the property line screening, loading, parking, trash areas. So right at the top of the wall, we're at four-and-a-half feet on the eastern side of the development. I feel we could shift the fence a little bit and probably get that whole five feet, but we've still identified that variance in case we cannot meet the entire five-foot buffer width.
Quick question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. When you mentioned the floor-area ratio deviation, that's with respect to the resultant lot, proposed lot, I forget if it's A or B.
The large lot, yeah.
The large lot. That's not counting what is currently Lot 23, correct? If I recall correctly, the rear triangular-shaped lot?
Well, it would be, because that triangular is now being consolidated with the overall site.
Well, I had it wrong. So it's not going with the Walgreens, it's going with yours?
Correct.
The other side, got it? So it is counting that in the denominator for the calculation of floor-area ratio?
That is correct.
Okay. And the adjacent lot to the east is at least currently vacant, correct?
That's correct, yep.
And it's township-owned?
It's township-owned, and it's completely.
It's green acres restricted?
It's green acres, it's, yep, exactly.
Is it your understanding that it's unable to be developed?
For actual development. It could be used for essentially parkland, recreational use, but it cannot be developed with a structure.
Thank you.
Of course. And then one other variance I just want to mention is we're seeking a critical area variance, which essentially does not allow any disturbance or building on areas that exceed or are identified as a critical area. And in this case, the critical area is a portion of the site with a slope that's greater than fifteen percent. And that area is essentially where that township or the proposed easement for the town will be. That steep slope looks like it was likely created when they constructed that Walgreens as part of the grading associated with the Walgreens. So I believe it's a man-made slope. But we will be disturbing that again, seeking a variance of it. I believe it's seven-thousand square feet of the nine-thousand square feet of that critical area that will be disturbing for the construction and grading of our proposed development.
If I may, I'm sorry, a board member first.
Does that include the easement for the township access to the parkland?
Yes.
So you'll take care of the grading for that?
Correct, we'll rough grade it, absolutely.
Just for the benefit of the board, there's a difference between man-made and natural slopes, but there's no difference with respect to the need for the variance, correct?
Yes, correct.
What, in your opinion, is the difference for man-made versus natural slope?
So naturally occurring would be essentially virgin ground that wasn't disturbed as part of construction. So this, the entire frontage of the site, so the landscaped area that is directly to the east of the existing accessway, looks like it was, you know, flattened for the development of the CVS. They put some landscaping in there, there's various curb cuts.
Walgreens.
Sorry, CVS was an old client of mine, so I tend to refer to CVSs. But the Walgreens, there's curb cuts in there, it looks like it was intended for drainage. So there was definitely development in there at some point, which likely created and made those slopes man-made versus naturally occurring.
And the remaining steep slopes on site are virgin in the conservation area?
Yes, correct. There's within the wetlands area that weren't permitted to be previously disturbed for the construction of the Walgreens. And they'll remain within that wetlands area and completely undisturbed. Taking a look at parking, so per RSIS Residential Site Improvement Standards, point-five spaces per dwelling unit are required for senior living use. We have eighty-seven units. Multiplying that out by half a space, it requires forty-four parking spaces, where we have forty-five proposed, which includes the four accessible parking spaces. And again, majority of the residents don't drive, there's that fourteen-foot or fourteen-passenger van. So the forty-five spaces will be used primarily for employees and visitors. The maximum shift, looking at about thirty employees, as Mr. McElwee mentioned, so that leaves fifteen parking spaces open for visitors.
You said some of them are EV-capable?
Yes, yep, we'll comply with the town standard. I believe we identified that we are proposing seven make-ready spaces. Four of them are identified on the site, and we will revise our plans to make sure we show those other three as well.
And that reduces the required parking, correct?
If we needed a variance.
If you needed one, but you don't.
Yep, correct, absolutely. And we have a compliant parking space size. So just briefly mentioning stormwater management. So we are designed to meet the New Jersey sediment, soil erosion and sediment control standards, the Township of Long Hill, and the state standards, which is NJAC seven colon eight. So the development meets the definition of a major development, since we're disturbing more than one acre. And we're also increasing our impervious surface coverage. So in order to comply with stormwater management, we take a look at three different things. Quantity, quality, and groundwater recharge. Quantity, we're addressing, and quality, we're addressing by the use of those two existing or two proposed basins that I mentioned. So directly to the north of the site, it's relatively new green infrastructure practice that the state introduced a few years back, it's pervious pavement. What this means, it's a pavement, just looks like normal asphalt, but it's more porous and allows the stormwater to get through it. And while the stormwater filters through that pervious pavement, it takes out the particulate, and it settles through a layer of rock, it takes out particular sands, oils. And then it also provides an element of storage within a stone layer below that, the parking area itself. So it holds back the water, retains it, and then ultimately discharges it to the wetlands area, and we comply with the reduction requirements.
Quick question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The part of that pervious pavement area is utilized for parking?
Yes, sir.
And part of it is used, that's not utilized for parking, is, I take it, used for some vehicle circulation?
Correct.
Does it not impact, I just lost the term, when you, when you.
Alloca.
Ground, grind?
Compaction?
Compaction, not impaction, compaction, thank you. Doesn't that not compact, or those special pervious pavers, it can't be compacted to the point where it becomes impervious, I take it?
Yeah, correct. So it's not actual pervious pavers, it's pavement. But there is, I mean, I've even designed warehouses using them with tractor-trailers driving over the top of it, and they've held up, so.
When you say held up, I'm sure they held up for the tractor-trailers, but they held up for the pervious nature so that the water is absorbing, et cetera.
Correct.
It's getting cleaner, quote-unquote, and being retained.
Absolutely. So as a part of a condition of approval and to comply with state standards, we'll need to prepare a maintenance manual that would have to be deeded to the property, which provides maintenance standards and directions for the owner of how they have to maintain that pavement area to make sure it's still functioning properly. And your township has the authority to essentially notify or require the owner to make sure they're keeping up and making sure those systems are functioning the way they are.
That'll be recorded with the county clerk's office.
Yes, sir.
Correct. And then so annually, the MS4 permit compliance by your township engineer gives him the authority to essentially require the maintenance immediately. And require the demonstration of the logs that show the maintenance for the township's compliance with the MS4 permit.
To ensure that it remains sufficiently pervious.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, by all means. The other basin that we're proposing is a bioretention basin, as I mentioned, which is in the frontage portion of the site. That's a typical above-ground depression. However, there'll be a special type of soil, well, it just meets special specifications, normal soil, but it'll be planted in there with white, wet site-tolerant plants. And those plants. And those plants obviously add a beautification factor to the site, but they also filter out particulate as stormwater is discharged through there. The, the stormwater will filter through the, the, the soil media. There's under drains underneath there, so basically a perforated pipe, which would collect that stormwater after it's cleaned, and then it would be discharged, in this case, the existing basin that is behind that Walgreens area. But again, we're meeting our reductions going to that basin, so we meet our quantity controls. And by the use of that soil and the filtering through it, we're also meeting our quality controls. As I mentioned, the last item that we always address is groundwater recharge. However, this site is unique, it, it's a commonly occurring thing that happens in this, in this area of the state. We have high bedrock and very low permeability capabilities. So we had our geotechnical engineer go out there, they looked at the soils, they did additional studies, and they're able to essentially confirm that this site provides no groundwater recharge or very little under existing conditions. So under proposed conditions, the water's still not going to be able to get back into the ground, which is why we have these wetland areas around the area, which we're not disturbing. But we are essentially, I wouldn't want to call it exempt, we're required to meet groundwater recharge, but we are zero groundwater recharge under existing conditions, so zero under proposed. So there's not a need to infiltrate any of the water or get it back into the ground. So we are complying with the three main aspects of stormwater management. And all of this, obviously, will be submitted with your, your township engineer, and we'll work closely with your board engineer to make sure we meet full compliance. We do have all utilities available to the site. Water, gas, electric, we've all received will serves. The interesting one is sewer. As you know, the, the sewer for Long Hill is at capacity. We've been working, trying to get updates from New Jersey American Water as far as their timing. We believe they're required by 2025 to begin making upgrades to their treatment plant to provide additional capacity. We're working closely with them, looking for updates, not too much to share yet, but obviously we're aware of the, the shortage of sewer service, and we'll make sure that we work with them to gain sewer service, which this area was identified as a site that will be provided sewer service. And as part of that, we will also need to amend the sewer service area map associated with the state to provide sewer service for the site, and we'll also need a TWA permit, essentially a treatment works approval from the DEP due to the proposed galonage of wastewater that would be generated by this facility. And that is typical of all senior living facilities of this size due to the generation of stormwater. But all utilities are available to the site. And as I mentioned earlier, we are providing an emergency backup generator, which is located within that trash enclosure to the eastern side of the building. It will be a diesel generator capable of providing about 72 hours of continuous runtime, and it's not meant to power the entire building, it's meant to provide a life support system. So critical lighting, making sure that anything that, that the residents need is available to them. So it's not, you know, not going to power every single outlet in the site, or, or the building just provides that necessary life support items.
That would be heat and refrigeration, things like that?
Absolutely, that is correct.
And that would be tested how many times a week and during what time frames?
That is technically, I believe it's tested a, on a monthly basis. It is tested at 30-minute intervals. And again, that would just be during normal daytime, times during the week, not on weekends, not late at night. And we'll make sure to comply with both the local and state noise requirements for that generator. Looking at lighting, we are designing this site to comply with IES standards for residential-type use. We have 19 decorative-style LED area lights mounted at 14 and a half feet within the parking areas. There'll be full cutoff fixtures, 15-foot is the maximum in the township, so we comply with that. We also have six light bollards throughout the site, which provide some real low-level lighting to illuminate the pathways or walkways that's encompassing the building, that's not directly with the, the parking areas. And we meet the minimums required by the, the township ordinance. These lights are intended to be on from dusk to dawn, since it's a residential nature. But again, it's, it's just the minimum that's required by code, it's not very intense lighting that you would see with the retail use. We're talking about like .5, .6-foot candles throughout the site. So nice low-level lighting, just to provide safety for residents and, and visitors to the site. We do have a landscape architect who's available to, to speak if we needed to, but I could briefly touch on landscaping. I'll bring up my final exhibit of my direct testimony.
Got to mark that one, too.
This I will mark as A3 with today's date. This is entitled Landscape Plan, and it's been colorized to help visualize the site. And it is dated April 1st, 2022, last revised March 31st, 2023. Again, orientation is the same, it's just our site plan with, with the plantings that are added to it, prepared by our landscape architect, Mr. Jim Langenstein. So overall velocity is to use various colors, textures, heights, to essentially soften the hard lines of the improvements from the perspective of the adjacent roads and properties, and it also provides a peaceful and inviting site for the residents and visitors. This includes varying colors and smells that are abundant and change throughout the seasons to really help provide some simulate, or stimulation to the residents. Mr. McElwee provided a laundry list of, of other sites that he's developed, the majority of them did, had the landscape designed by the same landscape architect, and I can tell you, these sites are beautifully maintained, expertly planted, and they're very inviting to the guests, and provides a very nice tranquil environment to live in. In addition to the landscaping, there's various outdoor areas that incorporate.
Before you continue, if I may, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the landscaping, is there a, a tree removal and replacement inventory calculations, et cetera? Can you touch on that real quick? And, and we're talking native species, et cetera?
Absolutely. So we did take a tree inventory of the site, and we surveyed essentially all the trees that exist in the area of improvement, so the area that we're disturbing that have a diameter of eight inches or greater. So it looks like that site is heavily wooded, but a lot of the trees aren't mature. There's about 25 existing trees that are greater than that eight-to-12-inch caliper that we will be removing. And a portion of them have been identified either in dead or poor dying conditions, some of them being those ash trees that you've heard plenty about. So we have to replace the trees on a one-to-one basis, which would be 25 replacement trees. Currently, we're proposing 62 trees, not including what's required for the parking spaces and screening. So we'd definitely exceed that replacement tree requirement for those. But there's an additional requirement, which requires 10 trees per acre for the entire site. So the site is about 8.7 acres in size, require density of 87 trees throughout the entire site. We didn't identify all of the trees outside the area disturbance, so essentially that triangle portion of the lot. But what I can tell you is, we're disturbing 3.14 acres of the site, and we're proposing 66 trees. So when you do the math for the area that we're just disturbing, we're looking at about 19 trees per acre in the area that is disturbed. But when we don't calculate the, the trees that are within the areas that we're not touching, it results in 7.2 trees per acre. But looking at the site, it's very densely wooded in that back portion that we're not touching. So I believe we would comply with the 10 per acre, including the entire site, and the area that we're disturbing, we're well over that, that 10 tree per acre requirement.
I suspect our planner will let us know whether there's compliance or not, and if not, that the deviation relief necessary.
Understood, understood. And I, there might be a couple of other opportunities throughout the site to plant some trees, so we can work with your planner, with your board, to, to fit what we can. Our landscape architect says he's, he tried to cram as many as he could on there to make sure that they're healthy and, and, and provide this required separation tree, between trees. So we tried to meet the intent of that, and we definitely meet it for the area we're disturbing, it's just the site as a whole.
And native species, non-invasive, et cetera, et cetera?
Absolutely.
Absolutely meaning 100%?
Yeah, so everything that we're planting would be native species, non-invasive. Overall, just, you know, speaking, I said we had those 62 trees proposed, which are varying deciduous and evergreen trees, but then there's various deciduous shrubs, evergreen shrubs, and, and different ground planting. So overall, as the plan sits, we're proposing just about 900 different plantings throughout the site. And our, the landscape architect is excellent with working with these sites throughout construction. If he sees something that he wants adjusted or changed as the site evolves, something he feels like is in a better place, he'll make sure it's beautifully landscaped, and, and again, we're more than happy to work with your, your board planner to make sure we meet the intent of the landscaping design for this site. We did receive letters from outside agencies. Again, I mentioned, we have our LOI for the, the wetlands, confirming what's on site and confirming that we're not disturbing any of it. We do have our Morris County Soil Conservation District certification, as well as our Morris County Planning Board approval to date, and we can pass all of that information on to the board. So just in closing, I mean, we looked at numerous layouts of the site and found that the current proposal employs safe and responsible engineering practices, takes into account the environmental sensitivities of the site, surrounding uses, and the ability for the township to provide access to that adjacent site. We have an environmentally responsible design, it's safe and efficient circulation for pedestrians and motor vehicles, we keep those two separated as best we can. We're completely outside the wetlands area in the transition zone, so we're not impacting those critical environmentally areas associated with the wetlands on the site. We have green infrastructure practices for our stormwater management with the bioretention basin, the pervious pavement basin, which would have a reduced impact on the surrounding areas when we compared the existing conditions, and it also proposes full compliance with the local and state regulations. And again, low-level lighting throughout the site, which keeps it nice and low, inviting for the residents. So upon completion, I really think this site would have low impact, it would be inherently beneficial use for the community, and provide some visual appealing aspects to a main thoroughfare of this site. So with that, I submit my, my direct, and if you have any questions, more than happy to answer them for you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, may we take a quick recess prior to starting questioning?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess before we question. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll recess.
Okay, we're back on the air.
We're back on the record at 25 after nine. All right, now, you've concluded your main testimony?
Yes, sir.
Okay, our experts, start with the planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one comment for the board, first of all. I think I recall Mr. Schnell saying that the details of the cross-access easement were, I guess, needed to be worked out between potentially the two new owners of Lot A and Lot B. If we get to that point, my, having had some experience with cross-access easements that were not clear, I would just recommend, and I'm sure that this was going to happen anyway, but just to, while it's on the table, that that cross-access easement be reviewed by your board engineer and board engineer.
Town engineer, too, yeah. We always have that.
Right, just to make sure. So that was just one note.
Okay.
My main question for Mr. Schnell has to do with, and this gets to, I think, some of the testimony that addressed the issue of not just the needing the relief from the maximum setback, but also the relief for the parking in the front yard, which relates to the entrance being in the front of the building. Because one of the comments in our letter was, well, could you testify as to whether options were explored to try to comply? Because this is really the downtown Valley District element of the master plan, and that's where this questioning kind of goes. And I think one of the things I heard was that the access easement, the 40-foot access easement to what would become Central Park in the master plan has to be preserved, and that's one of the reasons why the building is situated where it's situated. What I'm curious about from an engineering standpoint, I know some of this will go into the planning testimony, but when you said you lowered the site, you are, I'm assuming that you had to work with the existing grades of the finished access road in the 65-foot easement as a fixed given and work your grading from that point. I guess my question is, given the fact that really the intent of the master plan was to encourage pedestrian, more of a downtown pedestrian atmosphere in the Valley Commercial District, the slope of the existing access road down to Valley Road, would that be in excess of, say, 8% or 1 in 12, which would be handicapped accessible? I know it's a significant slope, and I assume that the answer is yes, but for the, and this gets to Ms. Brennan's question about people walking from the building to not just the Walgreens, but any other businesses along Valley Road. Do you know what the slope of that access road is currently?
Not the exact slope off the top of my head, but I can tell you it is compliant as far as an ADA standpoint, so there is no ramps associated with it right now, so that should mean that it's less than 5% under existing conditions. Where we're coming into the site, there are some areas that exceed 5%, so we get closer to that 8% realm. So how we're combating that is we actually have some handrails alongside our driveway entering the site, so it is still handicapped compliant. And, you know, that's important for a site like this, to provide walkability and compliance. And we're also required by the ADA code, the federal code, to provide on a private site, ADA-compliant access from our building to the public right-of-way, which we are providing. And that's one of the main reasons why we needed to lower the site, is to make sure that we ensured gentle slopes to provide that ADA-compliant access from Valley Road all the way to our site and around our site.
Okay, thank you. So that means that the slope, existing slopes would not be an impediment to trying to get the building closer to the road, but it sounds to me like the ability to maintain that 40-foot easement to the potential future township park would be the primary impediment in terms of your, the impact on the master plan's intent.
Yeah.
Which was to get the building closer to the road, whether it's residential or commercial, in my opinion, to have the parking in the back.
Exactly.
In this particular site, because of the way it's configured and you're effectively working with another fixed situation, which is the lease area of the Walgreens.
Correct.
Which makes your site, even though it's quite a large site, relatively narrow, long and narrow in terms of the developable portion of it. And that would, so that's the testimony in terms of, like, what I was trying to probe for, which was, were there options to redesign the building to try to comply?
Yeah, and we tried multiple different layouts with this site, and one of the main concerns was making sure we didn't disturb that lease area associated with the Walgreens. And we also said if we did slide that building forward, but due to the length of the building and the various different exits for that building, for the amenity spaces, it would have resulted in even a much higher retaining wall along that eastern property line, because that building, as it comes closer to the road, in order to maintain ADA compliance from the road, we have to drop that building down even further, because we're using the length of this driveway to essentially catch up grade and gain as much elevation as we can to place that building, to reduce the height of the wall while providing ADA-compliant access.
Okay. And then the, my last question, Mr. Chairman, has to do with a follow-up with Mr. Warner's question about the tree replacement and the 10 tree per acre standard. When I saw that, I pointed out in my letter that the requirement would be 87 trees, and I had noticed 66 trees proposed with a reference to a credit. And it's commonly typical to grant a credit when you have existing vegetation that's being incorporated into the landscape design, whereas in this case, the existing vegetation is primarily in areas of the site that would be non-developable to begin with, or the wetlands or other critical areas. So I think to get to Mr. Warner's question, Mr. Chairman, it would be my feeling that there should not be credit given for trees that are part of, are a part of critical areas that could not be disturbed anyway.
Okay.
And that the, it should be the area of disturbance for which, even though I understand and appreciate the testimony about the 10, 19 trees per acre within the disturbed area, the requirement, I think, is still 87 trees, and that I would think a relief would be necessary, or I think the indication was that there would be an attempt to comply. So if there's going to be revised landscape plan, in order to do that, I think we'd want to, we'd want to see that landscape plan and determine whether relief is necessary.
Okay. I have a question for that, because, you know, it's not always good to put high-density things together, because they conflict with each other. So I understand these same trees, but, you know, I don't want to put trees in that are going to kill each other because they're too close.
Right.
So you got to be careful.
We would want to make sure, and that's where I think, that's where the potential amendment to the landscape plan may come. You're not going to, as a licensed professional landscape architect, propose a planting plan that would be not in conformance with the American Standard for Nursery specification for placement and spacing. So if they're able to demonstrate that there's just no more room.
Room.
And I think one of the suggestions I would have, and I think I made a reference, is areas that potentially could be, where the buffers could be increased, that that potentially could be one of those, one of the areas where they might be able to supplement. They had mentioned the reference of trying to get some additional buffer planting to comply with the 5-foot standard in a couple of situations, to the extent that those evergreen trees meet the standard for, be counted towards the 87 trees. I think we would then need to, then we would know whether there's relief still needed.
Okay.
But I would recommend that the, that the standard would be 87 and not 66. And that's really all, that's really all I have for the site engineers, Jim.
Okay. Engineer?
Yeah. First, just to start with a comment for the board on the retaining wall height, the variance being requested. There's a 10.34-foot proposed wall where 6 is permitted. There is also associated restraining devices for the 4-foot fencing. So per our code, we'd look at that as a 14.34-foot. So just to document that as the requested relief, 14.34 to 6 feet, as opposed to the 10.34.
Can you say was it 6-foot?
Yeah, I just want to correct that.
Sorry, 6-foot fence?
Yeah, I think previously proposed was a 4-foot. Have proposed a 6-foot, you know, fence, which would be typical of a development of this nature.
So up to 16.
So it'll be up to 16.
And that's nominally based on, for a redesign of that wall relative to offsetting for the 5-foot?
That's correct.
As well to relieve the buffer spacing variance.
That's usually for protection, right?
Correct.
Correct, yeah, and add some screening as well. I mean, I know it's parkland that's next to us, but...
Under subdivisions, 3.5 in my letter, we spoke about Walgreens remaining in the lease for Proposal Lot B, the smaller of the two lots. Is it understood that the applicant will be purchasing the remainder of Lot A?
That's correct.
Okay. So access easements would be, well, all easements on the property that exists would be revised for the applicant as the owner?
Yes, sir.
And then over to Walgreens as the lease area?
Yes.
Okay.
They'd be buying Walgreens space, too?
My understanding is they would not be.
Oh, okay. It's just that driveway area.
So, yeah, it would just be...
Proposal Lot A owned by the applicant and Proposal Lot B staying under Parthenon, the existing ownership.
I'm not sure exactly how the structure would work out as far as who's going to own what, other than Capital would own the larger lot, and that Walgreens would be either, most likely the existing owner, yes.
Okay. And so Walgreens would be through lease?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll just keep that in mind for revision of gas easements, access easements, potential drainage easements, and the recommended stormwater facility maintenance agreement for the interrelationship of all these parties and what their responsibilities are and what access they have to grant to each other.
Understood.
Which will all be, you know, worked out with the township engineer as well in review. For, under site plan comments, start with comment 4.1. I had made a reference for compliance of RSIS standards. I had looked into this a little further, and believe it may not be required, and wanted to give an opportunity to shed some light on that from your position.
Yeah, so I might need some input from Mr. Warner on that. In the past, for these types of developments, I've seen that comment come up, and since it's, yes, it's a senior living residence, where it is a primary residence for seniors, we typically don't comply with residential site improvement standards for this type of development, because it's commercial in nature, even though it is a senior living development. So there'd be a lot of waivers from various RSIS standards. More than happy to provide that document. I just don't know if it's necessary for this type of development, to essentially outline any inconsistencies with the resident.
Essentially looking at it more of a commercial medical facility of sorts, for lack of a better term, rather than a residential rental.
Yeah, but at the same time, if we're granting essentially COA units to the town, it might qualify as a residential use, and we need to provide those, you know, list of items for compliance. I mean, we...
Is there a problem with providing?
I just haven't funded for this use. I'd be more than happy to work with your board engineer to, you know, piece that thing together.
Candidly, offhanded, I don't know other than to, two things. One, I think it would constitute, or I would think compliance with RSIS would be required, because it is residential primarily in nature, particularly with the COA units, Medicaid units. But B, I may, unless you could demonstrate to me to the contrary, it's applicable.
I think, I mean, to that...
Just for the purpose of the record, I want to make sure that any approval contemplated by the board grants the appropriate deviations from those standards.
I think we could leave it as I'd be more than happy to work with your board engineer to prepare that list and outline the...
And I don't know if we're going to get to the planner tonight, but maybe in the interim, that could be worked out, and when the planner testifies, maybe we'll have a more definitive answer.
Stormwater management, for the board's understanding of the comment, being that the original submissions had looked at overall standard of compliance through quantity, quality, and groundwater recharge site-wide of the full development, including the Walgreens. What we've looked at in their revised efforts is to maintain a separation between the Walgreens, which was developed as a major development under the prior 2004 stormwater rules, and the proposed development in front of us today that does not disturb that area, separately draining to the existing stormwater basin behind the Walgreens, as well as to the north of the property, to the conservation easement area, under the amended stormwater rules of 2021. So effectively, we have an existing parcel in front of us that will maintain its compliance for Walgreens undisturbed, and then the current new standard is applied to the portion of development that's in front of us as a major development deck. I'm confident with the revisions that they'll be able to demonstrate that. The groundwater recharge component, as they noted, they are preparing a reclassification to D soils, which essentially, instead of an exemption, identifies the zero-to-zero balance of the site to comply. We have known wetlands and flood hazard area, shallow bedrock. So what we see in that ecosystem is that the runoff and shallow percolating groundwater is essentially shelf and mound over that bedrock, and they feed those wetland systems. So it is critical to maintain demonstrating that balance, but that balance is a very small quantity that is still recharged to the site. So that will still need to be further demonstrated through the revised stormwater management submission, but it does, all calculations indicate that it will be compliant in all And, oh, New Jersey American Water for Water Service, there is a proposed above-grade enclosure along Valley Road?
Yes.
And so can you just point to where that is? And I believe outside of the site triangles under county jurisdiction, but along the frontage of the property?
Yes, correct. It's directly in the southeastern corner of the site. It's that rectangle, unless it's identified as a gray rectangle. It's a heated above-ground enclosure, known as a hot box. It essentially houses the meters and the backflow prevention devices. The state does not allow you to put them underground, so unfortunately, they are above ground, but we'll work closely with our landscape architect to make sure that's screened properly, and it is outside of those site triangle easements.
Okay. So it's requirements both the state and American Water for the standards to be above ground?
Yeah, it's a direct result from, for the building setback from the main.
If I may, on that one, how far setback is it from the front property line, from Valley Road, or wherever, front property line?
It's actually dimensioned, it's...
10-1?
Yep, 10.1 foot from...
Only 10.1 feet back?
Yes.
I know New Jersey American Water wants it practically on the road if they can get it, but...
We have a site easement, 10-foot wide site easement that we have to stay out of, which is why we didn't place it right up on the property line.
Well, there's other reasons why the board might not want it right up on the property line or anyone else for that matter. The question, I think, is more, how far back can you persuade New Jersey American Water to allow you to have it from 10.1 feet?
I think they were going to say 10.1. I could certainly try, because like... I could certainly try because they want it right up on their main. Their intent is, it sounds crazy, but to make sure no one's really stealing water from them because if you place it further back on the development, an owner could potentially, you know, tap the main before the meter, which is located in that box, and get water from them. So they like it as close to their main as it physically can.
Right. My experience, applicants have had some success sometimes in convincing them with the appropriate stipulated two conditions, if there's an approval, to setting it back further from what their ideal preference would be.
Yeah, we can absolutely pursue that, maybe with some assistance from the town, basically, you know, trying to push back on a little bit of a setback.
Some sort of condition of approval, if there's an approval and the condition so desired by the board would be wordsmith much better than I'm about to do now, but good faith, best effort, you know, to work with the township to...
Reposition that.
To locate the hot box as far back as feasible or whatever.
Absolutely. And we'll make sure it's not a silver enclosure, that sticks out like a sore thumb. We'll make sure it's, you know, painted green, screened, more than apt to, you know, stipulate that as a condition as well.
Painted green, screened, landscaped, and back as far as possible type of stuff. Okay, thank you.
With regard to the proposed access easement for the township, your testimony was the area would be dedicated, stormwater management would be accommodating of the impervious surfaces in that area. It would be the township's project to construct in that easement area. And would you be amenable to landscaping to go in that area until the time?
Correct.
Okay. So for additional screening purposes of the development from the frontage, allowing, as we see, you know, it's somewhat contrary to the master plan intent of having things up to the front of the road, but separating that entrance and internal intersection so much from, and screened from the proposed development. And then all other comments in the letter willing to comply with?
Absolutely. Not a problem.
We've got, board members, any questions?
Of course I have a question.
Of course.
My focus is going to go right to the retaining wall, 10 feet.
Yes, sir.
I'm not thrilled about that. Is there alternatives such as tiering?
Due to the need to have an amenity space on that portion of the property, that's where the assisted living, or I'm sorry, the memory care unit is, we like to provide outdoor space for the residents. If we tiered that, it would cut down on that additional amenity space. So I know it's maybe not the most attractive to have a 10-foot wall there, but due to the site constraints and the height of the park next to us and making sure we had that ADA compliant access, it was, we tried grading the site many different ways and situating portions of the site different ways, but the best we can result in was a 10-foot wall versus a couple other iterations where we had 14, 15, 16-foot walls in itself.
You couldn't cut back into the, into that property that you're putting the wall?
We couldn't because it's, one, it's township-owned and it's green acres, so we wouldn't be able to...
Okay, so that's what you, you hear with you from...
Correct.
Having a tilt into that property?
Yes.
So more than aesthetics, I'm concerned more with safety.
Yeah.
10-foot's pretty high fall, especially right next to a park that we're going to probably attract maybe 1,000 kids to, right? So all over the place, or even if it's not their property, they're going to be spilling over.
Understood. We're putting, you know, the six-foot fence on top as fall protection. We'll try to place some landscaping behind it as well as a further deterrent. I'm sure the applicant will be willing to work with the town if we, I'm not sure if we're permitted to disturb the site under, for green acres, but even just planning some additional landscaping to further to buffer, to provide separation on the township-owned lot, maybe we can, you know, do something with that as well. But the intent is to make sure that fence is there to act as fall protection. It wouldn't be a sense with slats where a small kid would be able to get through it or anything like that, it would be a solid fence.
Not allowing steel or something like that?
Yeah, correct. I believe it's vinyl is what's typical for this.
Vinyl, so it's low maintenance?
Yes, correct.
So you'd have to scale that fence and then...
Yeah.
You can't just go around the fence.
Yeah, no, the fence will come down until you're meeting essentially existing grade.
Okay.
So in lieu of the ability to grade into that property, disturb into that green acres property, perhaps amenable to bonding for landscaping improvements that the municipality would supplement the screening along that area for that fall protection?
Yeah, I don't think that would be a concern or issue.
So that would be landscaping to landscape in front of the fence?
Yes.
Outside of their subject lot?
Outside of their lot, right, exactly.
Right, municipal future improvement area.
That's great, yeah. So thank you for that. Then the number of units on the third floor? We talked earlier about the sprawl, I guess, or the distance that must be traveled by elderly people is one of the reasons why you want it to go up instead of out. How many units are on the third floor?
I'm not sure. Our architect will hear from him. He'll give you the whole layout of floor plan.
Question to that?
Yep.
Okay, then how about building height? Somebody mentioned 44 feet, I think, from the lowest point, grade point, to the highest?
Correct.
Is that a walkout basement style in the, in the back of the slope?
No, so it's a consistent finished floor elevation and the grade around the building will be a consistent elevation around the building.
That'll be the first floor?
Correct.
But at the lowest grade point, it'll be 44 feet from...
45 feet, correct, from the finished grade. But that's, that grade is more or less consistent around the entire outside of the building. It's not like two stories on one portion, three stories on the other.
Okay, so I'll save those for the architect.
Can I ask, oh, actually, it's probably an architect question, but you just mentioned pitch roof. Do we know how much of the 45 feet approximately in height is due to a pitch roof versus floor area?
I think our architect will be able to really spell that out with the nice elevations that they'll show with the different height dimensions.
Is any of this in a flood zone?
No. The portion of the site, yes, is in a flood zone, but we're completely outside of that flood hazard.
Everything is outside of the flood zone in the develop. The diesel fuel, how is that being stored and where is it being stored?
So it's a belly tank that's directly underneath the generator?
Okay.
So, and we're limited to the fuel capacity. Anything greater than, I think it's something like 1,500 gallons, you need special permitting from the DEP. So we have that plus or minus 72 hours of runtime, which I believe it is, and then anything like that.
You have to get weed tank, weed fills.
Yes.
And is that tank, obviously, it's going to cycle on and off for testing, so you'd have to have weed fills every so often.
Yeah, every so often. That's the other issue with storing too much fuel. Diesel fuel tends to go bad over time, so you want to make sure that, you know, the testing will utilize that fuel, will keep sure, make sure that tank is full.
Given that you said it's pedestrian-friendly and that in front of Walgreens, there is a sidewalk, is there a reason why you didn't put a sidewalk in front of your proposal?
We fully connect the sidewalks entering the site. There's a crosswalk over from our site to the Walgreens site, so everything's integrated as a walkable site.
There are sidewalks?
Yes, yes, sir.
There is a sidewalk along Valley Road, is that what you're saying?
Correct. There's a sidewalk along Valley Road. There's a sidewalk that exists on both sides of the existing driveway to the site, and then we'll extend that into our site. So you'll be able to stay completely on the sidewalks, not walk on roadway, be able to access Valley Road, Walgreens, and our site, and ultimately the Towns Park if that's ever constructed.
Is there a reason why you chose diesel instead of natural gas for the generator? I missed it.
So the, I believe the natural gas is just harder to get a, so for a portion of the senior living approval process from the Board of Health, you need to provide a guaranteed, essentially, support system. And what the Department of Health will require, or the DOH would require if we're going to use natural gas, is a letter from the gas company saying that we provide uninterrupted service to that generator, which gas companies, it's extremely hard to get because, yes, gas service is very reliable, but you could have a main that's cut during a time and there's no power, and then it interrupts the service. So that's why we always elect to go with...
So with the diesel, it's freestanding and independent?
Correct, absolutely.
While on that testimony, I can give you some more context. There are a lot of medical facilities, they're all diesel-fired. Seismic activities tends to shut down natural gas sources. So an earthquake, anything like that, you're shut down diesel, you can always be self-reliant. So all medical facilities tend to be diesel.
The only reason why I ask is my experience with Sandy was it was harder to get fuel than natural gas, but that's just one incident and there could be many things that could happen.
Understood.
To Cherry's point, have you considered dual fuel source?
Same, same situation. We've investigated that for other sites. It's difficult for those type of generators to provide that much power that you would need for this type of site, but I do know that the applicant does contract with a, another provider that if there's a prolonged period of outage, they're required to bring essentially a portable generator to be able to power this facility.
So the reason why I'm asking this is like, again, during Sandy, we have a similar facility that's owned by the township, and those two became dependents of the town essentially. They're renters, but they became dependents on the town during Sandy. We had to provide them, of course, we had to provide them the power.
Yeah.
They're elderly people and, you know, disabled people, they need, they need resources immediately. They're on oxygen, there's other things, they have to have it right away. So if there's a problem getting fuel, then that becomes the town's responsibility. I know you're a larger organization, you have lots of resources, regional resources, whatever, but it still becomes a burden on the town immediately.
Yeah, as I mentioned, I can't speak to the specifics of it, but I believe there is an agreement in place for the operator that they would have another company bring a trailer system here and they're, I think they, again, this is, you know, basically hearsay, but I believe there's the requirement that they provide uninterrupted service by contracting with another facility to bring in a generator.
It doesn't have to be hearsay. I see Mr. Calley walking backwards.
There you go.
Maybe, yeah, you want to clarify that?
Mr. Chairman, we have many communities where we have what they call a tap box. It goes on the outside of the building. So in the event that the power was not available for an extended period of time, CSH, Chelsea or Arbor contracts with a independent company to bring their truck up, as Dan described, and plug into the side of the building. So we will provide an agreement if this board wants as a condition of any proposed...
So that is a portable diesel generator that they would bring? Well, what kind of?
Now, this one will hook right into the...
Yeah, but what, what is supply? Is that truck a diesel truck with a generator or what?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. I'm just curious.
I'm not sure myself.
Well, it would have to be diesel because it couldn't be gas. So that would be a freestanding, another freestanding generator?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's in addition to the onsite generator?
That's right.
Okay.
So you, and you also have a contract with the oil supplier, the diesel fuel supplier to supply that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Are experts, any questions anymore? Okay. Before, are there any other members of the public? No? Okay, fine. I know there isn't, but I just wanted for the record that these, all these gentlemen out here are connected with the applicant. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Senator, one of the confusions I had related to your testimony regarding the sanitary, my understanding is that the, there's no more capacity here in Long Hill. And how is it, and I've reviewed, I guess it's your number 11 sanitary profiles, I'm not sure how that works or will work.
Yeah, exactly. So you're correct, there's currently no more capacity available. New Jersey American Water bought the sewer service from, I believe the township owned it at one point, but there's no longer any capacity. However, there is an agreement and an obligation for New Jersey American Water to provide, upgrade their facility to provide additional sewer service area, or I'm sorry, sewer service to expand the treatment for this facility or for the town as a whole, to provide additional treatment capacity. We're unaware of the current progressions of that. I know it's underway. I believe there's an obligation where they need to technically start work by 2025, which is getting close. So currently, yes, we're at capacity, but they are required to provide additional service to the site, so ultimately will have service.
Well, you can't even say whether it'll dovetail with your development and the increased capacity at that point in time.
Well, we will be connecting to that system. There's an existing sanitary main that enters the site. There's a stub that goes towards our site, so it's intended to provide sewer service. There's just currently no capacity, but they are going to provide, upgrade their facility to provide additional capacity.
And the information you have is that by the time you're ready to begin operations, that will be in place?
Yes, we will need that, correct.
At least you've gotten those kinds of insurances, it sounds like. Can you describe this, this, the bio, bio-retention pond? What does it look like? What's it going to look like if it's filled? What's it going to look like if it's not filled? How is that going to appear?
So essentially, it'll be an open space area with plantings in it. It will be a depression, so it'll look like, you know, a typical above-ground detention basin that you might see anywhere else, but...
Can you, can you show it on the site plan?
Yep, absolutely. It's directly in the southeastern corner of the site, directly to the east of the existing driveway. My plan is not a landscape plan, so we don't show it landscaped, however, since it is bio-retention, it means there will be plantings in it, wet site tolerant plantings, and those plants are utilized to help treat the stormwater as the stormwater infiltrates through the ground. So it won't have a sand bottom, it won't look like an unattractive basin, it'll look like a landscaped area that's able to hold water, retain it for a certain period of time. It needs to drain within 72 hours after a large storm event, which we'll comply with. So those plants would be able to tolerate the wet conditions, but at the same time, obviously tolerate dry conditions where there is no stormwater in there.
So it's not going to be pond-like?
Correct, no.
Because of all the soils and the plantings that you'll have there, that water will go down and...
Eventually, correct.
Into the, into the perforated pipes that are going to be at the bottom of it?
Correct, and then ultimately make its way to the existing basin behind the Walgreens.
I was curious about the circulation, traffic circulation throughout the site. Where, where does, you get a delivery from UPS, where, where do they go? Where do they park and how do they effectuate their, their deliveries?
Yep, absolutely. So UPS truck is actually very similar to in size to the type of typical delivery box truck that this type of facility would want to see. So directly to the east of the building, there's a loading zone, which is identified on our site plan sheet. It's the yellow area on our rendering there striped. So it's large enough, so you could see that extension of the pavement to the northeastern corner of the site. It kind of looks like a, we would call it a hammerhead. And it allows the delivery truck to first drive into the site going north, make that eastern turn towards the back of the site, and then they would turn north again and then be able to back down that, that little receiving area and into that yellow striped area, which is where receiving would take place. And, you know, UPS trucks would use that, the same type of facility.
Is there sufficient space under the portico chair?
Currently, there is not. I'm sure we can raise it, but the intent is not to allow delivery vehicles to go underneath that portico chair. It's sized to allow ambulance to get underneath there. I believe, I think it was either the engineer or your board, or the board planner made a suggestion of putting clearance signs underneath there, which we will, to deter delivery vehicles from going underneath that, which is the intent. We want ambulance to be able to load and unload people from that location, but delivery vehicles, we want to make sure they're utilizing the loading zone.
And the fire lanes, how do the fire trucks traverse the circulation?
Yep, so same thing. The fire truck is the largest truck that we anticipate to enter this site, and we designed it for the ladder truck, same thing, same exact circulation pattern, but that, that hammerhead to the back of the site is large enough for a fire truck to essentially turn around so they can get...
So the truck comes into the site through the driveway like everyone else does?
Correct.
What happens to it when it gets to your main site? What do they do?
So they continue north, same thing, head east behind the site, and they can either drive head in, going southerly direction until you get to the trash enclosure and you can't go any further, and then you'd be able to turn back around by backing down, entering that northern point of our paved area, which would give them enough room to right themselves and exit the site. So there is requirements that if you have a leg of the site that is greater than 150 feet, you would need a turnaround area at the end of that. But none of the legs that are associated with, those dead-end legs associated with the site exceed 150 feet, so we don't need a turnaround area for a fire truck at the end. We just have to have adequate space for them to turn somewhere on the site, which is why we designed that, that hammerhead element at the northeastern corner.
And there's a fire lane on the, on the eastern side of the property, yeah?
No, there's not full circulation around the site. There is just those hammerheads which gets you essentially half the coverage of the building in that portion, and you get the other half from, from the front portion.
So do you envision any concern with not having the ability to get a fire truck closer to that portion of the building, to that side?
No, we have a significant amount of reach, but there's different areas of refuge within the building. The employees of the site would be able to assist the residents in getting to the proper areas. The architect can talk a little bit more about how that kind of works with the different cutoff areas for, for smoke and areas of refuge, but there is adequate ability for fire trucks to access various points of the site to make sure they can get residents out or fight fires for that matter.
And again, on the eastern side, what is the stormwater situation on the east side? And again, on the eastern side, what is the stormwater situation on the east side? Are there pipes that that brings stormwater to the to the bio?
Yep, absolutely. There's there's different underground yard inlets that would collect, you know, area from the the small landscape areas there that would collect that stormwater and direct it to one of the two basins that we propose. So we are making sure that we capture that stormwater and direct it to where it needs to be.
And I guess the question about the the generator, it's located on the memory impaired side of the building, correct?
Um, not in particular, the memory care is on the first floor, and then you have two floors above it. So it's essentially just, you know, to the receiving area of the site. So essentially, the the back-of-house area of the site rather than the areas of the site where you enter and see immediately. So we try to hide.
Yeah, no, I I get that, but is there a better place you could put it?
That that's the ideal spot because it's in the back-of-house area. We can hide it there. That's why we place it within a trash enclosure that helps screen it, helps with sound attenuation. We have a sound attenuating enclosure to make sure that we meet those those noise requirements at the property lines. So that that we felt is the most attractive location to put it and make sure that it's well screened.
And you have that for the generator. What about the trash enclosure area? Similar kind of sound reduction mechanisms in place?
Not technically for the trash enclosures. The trash enclosure and generator enclosure is the same structure, so we have the generator and trash in there. The trash is, the noise is generated by the trucks, but as Mr. McElwee mentioned, you know, we would comply with any ordinance the town may have for particular pickup times to make sure it's not early morning or or late at night. So we would, you know, the the trash, there's no compactors or anything associated with that's going to make additional noise in that portion.
So I guess there's really no way not to disturb the residents when the trash truck comes to do his pickups?
Yeah, I mean, briefly, they they may be disturbed, but that's the point where we would want those trash pickups to be during the daytime when residents would most likely be awake.
I don't think I have any further questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question. Is the building sprinkled with sprinklers?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, is it a charged or air system?
Uh, I I think the architect can touch on that, but I believe it's charged. I'll let him confirm.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Uh, one more question. What would be your next witness?
Traffic engineering, Mr. Chairman.
How long do you anticipate that being?
Five minutes.
[laughing]
At least on direct. I can't promise the questions, but five minutes on direct testimony.
I I'll hold you to that, but.
It's coming from my traffic engineer, but I do believe him. It's a recitation of the report, the summary.
Drives fast, okay. I I would say, let's start with him, and if we can't get his entire testimony in with the questions, we'll have to have him back.
We appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. We'll do our best.
Your name for the record?
David Shropshire, spelled S-H-R-O-P-S-H-I-R-E, professional engineer, professional planner, both in good standing, state of New Jersey, principal of Shropshire Associates, 277 White Horse Pike, Adco, New Jersey.
Okay.
Are you TPOE as well?
No.
Okay, but P-B-N-P-E.
Correct.
Nice, okay. And any objections, Mr. Steve? None.
Okay. We deem you an expert.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So David, your office has the benefit of preparing a traffic engineering assessment. The original date was April 4th of 2022, is that right?
That's correct.
You're fully familiar with the programming of this project, including all plans filed and connection with the project?
Yes.
So if you would, with five minutes that we think it's going to take on direct, could you take the board through the summary conclusions of your assessment here as far as efficiency of traffic movement and parking?
I will, and one other background item. Most of the facilities that Mr. McElwee has spoken about, we have done work for them. We've done a lot of work with assisted living, not only doing work before the actual build, but have done out parking studies, done traffic counts, so we know trip generation, we know parking generation, have supplied some other information to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which I'll refer to as part of our study. We went out and did traffic counts at the intersection of the two county roads, which I won't go over. Mr. Senol briefly describes those two county roadways. At the traffic signal, we did it on a typical Thursday in October of 2021. We counted between seven and nine and two to six in the afternoon. The peak times that we found out there were eight o'clock to nine o'clock in the morning, about a little bit less than 1,500 vehicles at that signalized intersection. And then again, 4:45 to 5:45 in the afternoon, a little bit over 1,900 vehicles, so our critical peak hour is the PM peak hour. We then uploaded background traffic growth into our traffic study to look at the future year when this will be built out, and laid on top of that, the trip generation from this proposed use. This is a low-traffic generator. Projected 19 trips in total during the morning peak hour, 26 trips during the afternoon peak hour, and that is a composite of employees, visitors, anybody coming to the site. Why so low? It's so low because basically different shift times for different employees, and that's the real generator of traffic volume at the site. Very low visitor activity, spread out usually throughout the course of the the daytime, but it is low in nature. So we loaded those 19 trips during the morning peak hour, those 26 trips during the afternoon peak hour to the signalized intersections, evaluated it, and it had no impact on the levels of service at that intersection. Levels of service are what we do to evaluate capacity. It really didn't change the delay composite at that overall intersection. To give you an idea, during that critical PM peak hour, we're about 1% increase at that signalized intersection. It really didn't change anything with regard to our evaluation of future conditions. So that that is encapsulates what's in the study, and I just want to make mention of the uses that are permitted within this zone, the BD zone. There's a lot of traffic intense uses that could be built within this zone. This obviously is a very low-traffic generator. So with regard to planning testimony related to traffic intensity, there is no negative component in that something much more traffic intense could be built and permitted at at this zone based on what is permitted within the zone. And I think that's about as short, probably hit the five minutes if I.
As long as you think you've said everything.
I, that is a summary of what's in there. It's a minimal impact related to this, and it's because it's such a low trip generator.
Is there anything in our traffic report that you wanted to address?
I actually did not see a copy of that.
Oh, okay. All right, let our traffic expert then ask some questions.
Chairman, can I ask you a couple of quick ones before we get to that?
Okay, of course.
The, thank you. The, most importantly, you're referring to your April 4, 2022 reports?
That's correct.
Okay, because that should be on the record. The, and use the ITE for assisted living 100 beds for your parking, your trip generation, correct?
That is correct.
Did anybody compare that to the actual experience with respect to the 150 or so sites that were mentioned by this particular applicant?
Yes, actually, some of those sites were loaded into the Institute of Transportation Engineers database for generating the trip generations that we used.
Some of them are in there, okay. And was there a factor for post-COVID, you know, for COVID versus post-COVID?
No factor with regard to whether it increased or decreased based on COVID.
Okay, but there is a growth factor, 1.5%? Future?
Yeah, that's a future background growth, correct.
Okay, all right. And the left turns Plainfield Road, northbound Plainfield Road, left turn movements, level D, is that currently level D as well as proposed?
Yes, and to give you an idea.
It's not getting worse? It's it's like my grades in high school. I get one A D and then I get another D. It didn't get any worse.
I I quickly looked at the.
And I end up going to law school.
Yeah, that's how you get into law.
Since, since, since level of service D was the highest level of service that we had in terms of delay, I did take a look to see exactly what impact we had. If I remember correctly, I think it was 43.5 seconds of delay under the no-build condition, and it went up to 43.8 seconds, so it was negligible in terms of the increase in delay.
Almost a D plus, all right. The, okay, I'm trying to steal any of the thunder from our expert.
Oh, there you go. Go ahead. We got to make you feel wanted.
I don't know. I I will say this, that that we have actually reviewed other reports on other facilities that Mr. Shropshire has done, and one was extensively reviewed by another board that I have, not just in the, before they built it, but then we went back and looked at it afterward. And I I have to admit that it is very sad, after we did the after-studies, how few people go back to these facilities.
You're talking about visitors?
Yeah, the visitors are extreme. We we had a lot of concerns about parking at the other board level, and Mr. Shropshire's testimony is is quite on target. We we found that the trip generation is very, very low compared.
And it's mainly employees?
Yeah, it's almost 100% employees.
And then whatever delivery vehicle.
Yeah, the only only time that things get a little busy is on Mother's Day or Father's Day, and, you know, they typically tend not to be, you know, real challenges for the locations that the facilities are. So with regard to that, you know, we we find that the, his testimony with regard to the trip generation, the traffic is is quite on target. Some of the concerns that we had in our review, though, were more related to the site plan and the fire truck and the easement and whatnot, which is, which the site engineer did testify to. But, so with regard to the traffic, I, Mr. Shropshire's assessment is spot on. Generation's very low. I don't see any negative impact with regard to the to to Valley Road or the the circulation as far as the public roads are concerned, and I feel very comfortable the parking provided here is adequate. What I would like him to do, and, you know, of course, it's going to put you in a spot here, is I'd like you to go over the comments in our, in the, under the section of the site access and sort of site circulation. One of the things the site engineer said was that he had a circulation plan, but I don't remember him putting it up and showing us. So I'd like to see, I also like to get verification that he spoke to the fire chief and got the proper fire truck. And I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that and make sure that it's done right.
Well, just to let you know, we're getting a new truck, a new ladder truck that's going to be even bigger.
Am I speaking to the fire chief now? No.
It's going to even be bigger. So the bigger truck is going to be bigger than the one we have now.
Well, typically, we really like to to make certain that, and if not, if they don't do it, then I do it. All right, we like to speak with the fire chief and make sure that he's seen the plan and that they're they're comfortable with it.
These plans were sent to the fire department, right?
I'm not 100% sure yet.
Deb, do we have another copy of the March, your your report, John, is, and Joe Fisher, is March 28, correct?
I do have the March.
We have an update April 13.
You have an April 13 update?
Yeah, the original report's March 28, and an updated report was sent out around April, something in the area of April 13.
Normally.
Maybe Deb has an extra copy for this gentleman who apparently never saw it.
Did you get one?
I've not, but I did get the two plans with regard to circulation sheets 21 and 22.
Do you have an extra copy of those?
Yeah. All said and done, we we'd like to have time to, I mean, I'd like to, again, I want to know it's the right fire truck. All right, if they haven't talked to the fire chief, then I want to talk to the fire chief, and we just want to make certain that that this is.
The truck can maneuver in there.
Yeah, and and of course, we want to talk about the ambulance too. The fire chief usually is the guy that's, you know, having something to do with how the ambulance is getting around to. We want to make certain that, look at that as well, make sure that the.
Well, you have to speak with the local first aid squad, the captain. But that's a valid point. We don't know whether these plans were sent.
I don't believe they were yet.
They weren't? Okay.
So I can do that tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
And make sure that they get commentary.
Sure. I I just think that 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 is one of the more important aspects of it because we don't have a, we don't have a total circulation around the building, we just have a three-quarter circulation, and the maneuverability is is very important of any emergency vehicle.
Correct, and sheets 21 and 22 clearly demonstrate that everything will work as has been testified by the site engineer.
Where, what she, what planning?
Of the site plan set, sheets.
The filed set, Mr. Chairman, that would be.
Sheet 21 and sheet 22, and it shows the 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 delivery vehicles, the trash vehicle, a fairly large fire truck and the ambulance on separate turning patterns on those two sheets.
Yes, I believe we were okay with the with the garbage truck and the ambulance, but it was still pretty clear that we, did we give this verification that the right fire truck was the new, and make sure that we have not, and somebody needs to apologize. You want us to do it, you guys need to do it, something that needs to happen.
We'll do.
John, do you have an extra copy of your report, if I have a chance?
I can, I can email one over to Dave. All I have is one, I didn't bring extras for for anything else. I only have one, my report for myself.
You know what? And John, you, I actually have the March 28 on our website. Was, you said there was an April update?
Yeah, I have a April update.
I'm looking from Joe, who would.
He just got a copy.
Is that the March 28?
No, but that's March 28. I don't.
There's minimal changes between the two reports.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. I don't.
Some comments, some comments were addressed, some comments missed.
All right.
We'll make, we'll make sure we get a copy of the.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Yeah, I apologize. Maybe I missed it. I, but I don't see it in my emails.
Yeah, I don't see it either.
So, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, do you, do you know what size emergency fire vehicle you were using?
I'm going to defer to the site engineer.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Some other little minor things, though. I think they should identify the EV spaces. I'm not sure that was clear. He testified to it.
But where are they?
But, yeah, I think they should, you guys should see where they're going to be, and that should be resolved. I I don't want to stress how, I, that Mr. Roberts stressed and and Mr. Werner stressed, I can't stress how important it is to make sure this easement is properly reviewed and properly vetted. I can't tell you every, I I do tons of work with NJDOT. I cannot tell you how, on a regular basis, between jurisdictional issues and snow plowing, and it's so important that we make sure we get that right and make sure they they get that and all get that that clear.
And you're talking about the entrance easement?
Yes, sir.
Going alongside.
Really critical to the success, the long-term success of the project.
Can I interrupt? Is there any, are there any implications with what we're looking at as a township to have access to our park line there with with regard to easements and the stuff you're talking about?
Without a doubt, that's, it's why it's so critical. I mean, we're, we're part of this.
How do we execute that and make sure that it's done the right way?
And and I would assume that will probably, ultimately, that's going to get vetted not only by Mr. Werner, but by the township attorney as well, correct?
Yeah. Would have to be, if if we were so inclined to prove it, it would be in the resolution that the burden would be on this applicant to properly maintain those right of ways.
My experience is, 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 these are challenging things to get right, and because we have multiple involved parties, including us, I I think that, you know, however the board acts on this, it should be important to make sure that we've got our interests properly covered.
Of course.
And the owners is put where it it belongs to make sure that that the town does not end up getting sure changed on this.
So you didn't, you didn't have a chance to answer my question. What size emergency vehicle were you using?
So I I can testify to that. So on our sheet 22 at our site plan set, if I recall correctly, we did get the the size of the truck currently. For Long Hill, it's not identified on our plan, but this is a 47-foot ladder truck. But more than happy to work with the fire chief, get the dimensions of the new truck that it sounds like you're getting, and the turning radius is.
By the time you're building, you'll have the new truck.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm sure you may know what truck you're getting, so we can get the dimensions. We'll run that through the site, work with your fire chief to make sure that we address any concerns that they may have.
Also, in our review of the site plans, there were some MTCD compliance issues with regard to stop bars and yield bars and crossroads and whatnot. Do you please make certain that you look at the site engineer to address those issues? You know what the requirements are.
We will do so, and.
It's outlined in our memo.
Yeah, as Mr. Jarrett had mentioned, we successfully worked on a very similar project and made sure that we were in complete concurrence with regard to working through these comments. So I don't have any fear that we won't be able to address everything that's in the letter.
So is what we're anticipating, him coming back, having reviewed your report and finishing his testimony vis-à-vis response to your report?
Yes, only because he doesn't have the latest, and I didn't even see the latest.
I didn't get the April one either.
Yeah.
Somebody dropped a ball somewhere. Most likely, most likely someone in my office sent it to the wrong person. That's my recent experience is, oh, that's who I'm supposed to send it to.
Okay, play one of the.
If it was my mistake, I take full responsibility, but I don't see it in my emails, so.
That's never going to happen. We're never going to.
We're not allowed to do that.
It's my fault, and I will get it corrected. But I'll also make sure that if, with the board permission, I'll send it directly to Mr. Chairman.
Yes, oh, definitely.
That would be great.
This way.
I mean, yeah, be absolutely forthcoming with sharing those.
Yeah, and if you could, quite honestly, you get the memo, and you can send me written responses, it'd be great to come back and say, my favorite thing is, hey, board, all my comments have been addressed.
Yeah.
Now, I don't have to say very much. I like that.
That's fine. You know, not that we don't appreciate your testimony today. I mean, that was helpful. Being the late hour, I think that, do you want to ask any questions now, or do you want to wait till he comes back and?
No, I can wait.
Okay.
Because the witness is coming back anyway.
Yeah, he has to come back.
No, I'll defer to you.
He has additional information he has to comment on. Before he goes, we have a little time. Does any board member have a question about what he's said so far?
No.
Okay. Any other comments that you would want him to address before he comes back?
I wouldn't want to delay the meeting any further.
No, but I'm just saying, you've stated all of your concerns. I just want to make sure, okay? And he's going to get a copy of the recent report. He's going to research the size of the fire engine, and we'll go from there.
Yep, it'll be emailed first thing tomorrow to everybody. I'll make sure Deb gets it, and he gets the signal.
Okay.
Are you sure your office will do that? They won't screw it?
I am very confident that they will do that, because I will personally be seeing to it. I listen.
Yeah, right. Oh, and also, you're going to get some more information from us, from us about the status of your client.
The standing issue, yes.
Yes, okay. Now, what dates do we have?
July 25.
Is that good for your witnesses?
One month, basically.
Yeah, but just.
Well, you won't have all those questions then, is that right?
26, 25, or 26?
25.
It's a Tuesday.
Would they have the whole night that night, Deb, anticipated?
Yeah, they're going to need the whole.
No.
No? No?
No.
Yeah, they need a whole night.
Well, they can, they can continue on July 25, but we do have another applicant on July 25th, assigned application. It should be quick.
Who?
Citizens Bank.
Is that a?
At the ShopRite.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that should be quick, hopefully. Okay.
They have 12 people.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no.
Go ahead, what was your?
July 25 will work. I'm going to be in trouble because I have to leave a vacation to get here and drive 300 miles, but we'll make it work, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, Larry, the next date I can give you, honestly, is?
That's fine.
Is September 5.
That's fine. No, no, I want it on the record so I can send it to my wife and say, I tried. So I tried, and the chairman gave me a dirty look and said, no, I drive 25, so.
No, 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 I don't want your wife mad at you, no.
Steve Warner did.
But you do realize, Deb just advised me, our board secretary just advised me that we do have another short applicant, I don't mean in stature, but shortened time, of the Citizens Bank that may, that requires a sign variance. Hopefully, we can get them done within 15, 20 minutes and then get you started.
That'd be great. We don't have much left. The planning's going to be the lion's share of what's left. Traffic should be a wrap-up at that point.
No, I understand, but I mean, we want to get them in and out.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'd rather do them first. I don't want them sitting here because we might never get to them if, you know, I'd rather get them in and out.
I understand.
It should be.
We would do the sign application prior to this, yes.
Yeah, we'll just get, hopefully, no more than a half hour for them.
Okay.
And then we'll start you up again, preferably with the traffic person and then, you know, short, short with them, and then, how many more witnesses would you have?
Two full witnesses, architecture and planning, and a wrap-up of traffic.
Okay, fine, okay.
Mr. Stevens, do you anticipate having any witnesses other than comment?
Other than your questions?
Yes, in fact, I will have a planner on the 25th. I've already confirmed his availability.
Any other witnesses that you anticipate having?
Not at this time.
When can we expect to confirm the status of our objectors' client?
Next meeting. You're supposed to have that information.
Yeah, I was wondering if it was going to be submitted in advance to the board. Tonight, tonight, we heard a lot of I don't knows, and I would just like this to have some finality as we go into July.
It's an appropriate question. What you're asking is to have a submission by the objector with respect to standing as has been discussed within, say, two weeks from today, so that there's an opportunity for you to respond and the board to review and to review your response, if any, and.
I think that's a fair request.
To address the issue.
Two weeks should be enough time.
I don't see any problem with that.
Okay.
So two weeks there and one week before thereafter for a response? I saw that the board has and I have a week to review everything before the next meeting?
That's fine.
Which is about four weeks out, if I'm doing my math correct?
So we don't have any, anything on the 4th, obviously, it's July 4th.